Five years or 10 years ahead. So, out of that council retreat we had earlier in the summer, we decided to have five different, single-topic meetings that we would take one or two days with really no other business besides discussing a big issue. And in this case, the environment was the first of these that we tried, and it was a great success.
Or what about a dozen city departments that made presentations over the two-day period? What happens next? Will any action actually be taken? Or was this another one of those note-and-file exercises?
No, this is definitely a plan for action. We determined that we wanted to hear from every single department that impacted the environment, either through their internal operations, like the trash trucks that we have in the Bureau of Sanitation, or through some of our external operations, services that we provide to the people of Los Angeles through the port or the airport. So, we heard for an entire day and a half from each of those departments, then from a lot of advocates from the environmental community, and we got over 80 different motions from council members who were encouraged to essentially begin drafting a green print for a sustainable Los Angeles. And that will go to committee, our Energy and Environment Committee, to be returned to council for a full sign-off by the council and eventually the mayor. We will hold ourselves accountable to the goals that we put in there. These won't just be vague promises. They will actually have numerical goals in improving our air, our water, our land, and the way we deal with waste in Los Angeles.
Well, you just said the magic word, "sustainable." Sustainable city, sustainable plan. What do you mean by that? And how does it affect the men or women who are out there on the street every day?
Well, we all love Los Angeles. Whether we're lucky enough to be born here or whether we moved here, Los Angeles is our home. But we have to be able to sustain life and a good quality of life here in Los Angeles. We have to make sure that our oceans and our river and our lakes become cleaner. We have to make sure that the air we breathe, which is still the worst in America, even though it's improved from the '70s, it still needs to be cleaner. We have to look at having parks throughout our city. And each of these things need to happen in all parts of Los Angeles to sustain what we want to see here. It's good for our health, but it's also good for the health of our city in economic terms, in terms of the commerce that we bring to Los Angeles and whether people continue to live here. We have to live within our means, and if we do so, we can continue to enjoy that which makes Los Angeles great.
Another thing you said a few moments ago was a green print for the city. You've mentioned something like 80 motions being brought already. What does it mean to have a green city? Why is green important in the larger sense?
Well, green is important not as an end unto itself, but as a means to making sure that we can have good-paying jobs here, that people can live in housing close to their work, that people can get around easily in this city, and they can grow up healthy and have a longer life in Los Angeles. It's not so much that we want to see clean-fuel cars, which we have now thousands, one of the largest fleets in the country, second-largest only to New York City. But we also want to breathe good air so that our families can enjoy time outside in parks, so that we can go swimming in the beautiful ocean which defines Los Angeles, which unfortunately, many days, is so polluted that we can't. So, really, it is about making sure that the regular activities we do, play, work, and living, become healthier activities for all of us. And that's what the green print should really achieve.
One of the things that you've been on this program talking with us about before has to do with trees and the greening of LA. For example, there was that Million Tree Initiative that we've heard about. How's that going, by the way? How can our viewers participate in the program? And of course, there's been a controversy the past couple of weeks over where are the million trees?
Absolutely. And I share that concern that we have to be tracking the trees that people are planting or taking home to plant. People can find out more information about this groundbreaking program at milliontrees.org. It's a great website, or by calling 311. For years, the city has been one of the leaders in providing free trees or planting street trees next to our sidewalks. And if you want up to seven free trees, for instance, from the Department of Water and Power, you can call 311, get those forms, choose the trees you want. But we also want to make sure we're educating people, not just how to plant a tree, but how to cultivate and grow a tree over time. Because we don't want a million trees turning into half a million dead twigs in the street or in the backyard. If we can plant the trees that we have set forward to do, and we've already gone well past 150,000 trees, we estimate, then we can make sure that Los Angeles is able to retain water when it rains, that we're able to breathe better air, and that we have a cooler city in a world that continually is heating up. And lastly, instead of focusing just on the number of trees, I believe this council is focusing on what sort of canopy do we have in the city? And we've set ourselves the goal of having 25% of the entire city have a tree canopy in that topography within the next five to 10 years. We're going to find out exactly what is a realistic goal. But I think a decade from now, a quarter of our city will have trees covering it.
You talked about the cooling of the air and the cleaning of the air, but you also briefly mentioned water. And of course, we've been in a prolonged drought and who knows how much longer that's going to go. I know that you have a personal interest in the part the trees play in the water cycle here in Southern California.
Absolutely. Remember, there was a gentleman who sat in a big, huge oak tree a little bit north of our city, in Santa Clarita area. Oak tree and did not want it to be taken down and eventually was able to keep that tree alive. And many people asked, you know, "It's just one tree. Millions of people are going to use the road that would go through." But what people didn't realize, and what people, I think, after the fact, learned, including myself, was that when it rains, a beautiful old oak like that retains some 30,000 to 40,000 gallons of water, water that otherwise would hit some sort of drain, go straight out to the LA River and out to the ocean. You know, it used to be said that when this state was built and this city was built, that every bit of precipitation, snow or water that would land outside of LA was engineered to travel to Los Angeles as quickly as possible through the marvelous aqueducts and other systems we have to sustain life here. But within Los Angeles, we have engineered all the rain that falls here to as quickly as possible leave Los Angeles, essentially to wash away from our city instead of infiltrating to sustain life and to give us a drinking water supply. That is finally changing as we have projects like the Million Trees Initiative and as we're tearing up some of the concrete and asphalt to allow water to percolate naturally into our aquifers.
I want to get back into more of that subject in just a moment. But talking about some of the water that is just rolling through Los Angeles on its way ultimately to the ocean, this term TMDLs keeps coming up. What are they? Where do they come from? Why do they require our attention? In fact, I think it's a matter of federal law now.
That's right. TMDL is just a fancy acronym for Total Maximum Daily Load, which means the pollutants that we have in our bodies of water. There are over 60 of these pollutants that we are required to take out of different bodies of water in the Los Angeles area, from trash in the LA River to bacteria in Santa Monica Bay, from nitrogen in Echo Park Lake. All of these pollutants, whether they be heavy metals or the trash that we throw on the street or oil that gets washed right into our river, we have to do a better job of making sure that we change our personal behavior first. But then, secondly, the city is spending considerable amount of money through the successful passage of Proposition O, which I put on the ballot with Councilwoman Jan Perry a few years ago, and 76% of our voters passed, which allows us to bring in real, big sources of money to be able to clean up the river, to clean up our lakes and the ocean. And the impressive thing is, we are the only large city in America that is right now in compliance with those federal Clean Water Act requirements on each of those bodies of water to bring it back to a swimmable, drinkable, fishable standard, depending on which body of water. And that's something that all Angelinos should be proud of.
But don't those standards get even stricter and more difficult to meet as the years go forward? Aren't there, isn't there a timetable involved here as well?
Absolutely. While we've met the timetable so far, Proposition O, which was half a billion dollars, we've already pledged to projects that'll just take us through the first four or five years. We need to find new sources of money to be able to clean that water further. We're hoping that the state may change the state constitution to allow a 50% vote of the people that would then allow us to take the stormwater fee and directly pay for these improvements. For many years, we fought lawsuits from environmental advocates who wanted to see clean water, and we complained that it was too expensive. But I think Proposition O showed how badly Angelinos want clean water, are willing to pay a fair amount for that. And I think the day that we can see, as we're seeing in the Los Angeles River, fish returning or people being able to swim in a lake or the ocean, that is a day that we will all celebrate our victory of clean water.
I want to give you another moment to talk about that because there's 51 miles of the Los Angeles River at play here. How will the river change and in turn presumably improve our environment and the quality of life here in Los Angeles?
Well, I live right by the Los Angeles River, and I grew up walking alongside its banks. Many people don't think we even have a river because it looks essentially like the big flood channel that it has been re-engineered to be. But recently, you know, I think things are really turning a corner. I serve on our ad hoc river committee with Ed Reyes. I'm the vice chair, and he's our chair. And I think our concentration on the LA River is finally yielding results. Just two weeks ago, I was down in Elysian Valley, which is in my district. And I looked up, I was there with a ranger from the Santa Monica Mountains Authority, and we saw a beautiful osprey, a fish eagle, come and land on a post. And he said, "You know what? When an osprey is by the Los Angeles River, that means that there's fish in the river. And when there's fish in the river, that means that the water is getting healthy again." And I think that was a wonderful story and a wonderful metaphor for what we need to do along the entire river. 51 miles of a river that gave us our name after all. We're named after the Rio de los Angeles, the River of Los Angeles, is something that we all need to be concentrated on. Did a great job of engineering a way to avoid the floods. Now, it's time to re-bring back the life that defines the Los Angeles River. And recent studies show fish are jumping back in the LA River.
Finally, during the meeting, you said over the next several months, council is going to be focusing on other topics in the same way. Could you quickly give us a preview? And what specific topics have been chosen besides the environment?
We're going to tackle one of the five topics each month, topics that Angelinos are most concerned about. We've done the environment. Public safety will be our next. Probably, transportation will be the third. Our infrastructure, our aging infrastructure, will be fourth. And then finally, we'll look at housing and homelessness. We think those five topics, by setting goals, not just having a conversation, but holding ourselves accountable to those goals, will be a great way for us to have a proactive agenda to improve life for all Angelinos.
Well, we look forward to seeing and hearing all about it. District 13 council member and council president Eric Garcetti, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack. Great pleasure.
All the motions, suggestions, and questions, and again, there were over 80. We'll now go to the chief legislative analyst, the CLA, to be researched, formatted, and brought back to council for final approval. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at 213-473-3978. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October 12, 2007. On behalf of Lee Smith and everyone here on Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Hey, buddy! You with the stupid hat! Near, closer. No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the street so emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally. And you know what else? You can get a citation! And you can be towed!
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
Hey, look out for the pothole!
I'm Los Angeles Mayor Antonio Villarogosa, and September is Latino Heritage Month. This month, we continue to honor our rich and diverse past and highlight the work of local artists who keep Latino traditions alive and vibrant in our communities. Los Angeles truly is where the world comes together. And I encourage you to explore the many facets of Latino culture by taking part in this month's festivities and visiting your neighborhood arts and cultural centers. For a listing of all the events, exhibits, fairs, and festivals, visit our website, latino.lacity.org.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for October 16, 2007. It is about 10 o'clock a.m., and we meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. in the John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. I want to welcome members of the public who have joined us, as well as our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts our meetings live each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday on Channel 35 throughout the city's cable system and rebroadcast it in the evening. We also are available online through our city's homepage with live webcasts of our meetings at lacity.org and through our telephones at 213-621-CITY, where you can listen to the audio proceedings of our city council meetings and any of our committee meetings as well. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Labange, Perry, and Zine. There are seven of us here, and we are waiting three more members to constitute two-thirds of our body or a quorum. So, if we could please have Councilmember Gruel join us, Councilmember Parks join us, Councilmember Reyes join us, Councilmember Rosendahl join us, Councilmember Smith join us, Councilmember Weiss join us, and Councilmember Wesson join us as soon as possible pursuant to council rules. We are supposed to be in our seats at 10:00 a.m., ready to begin the meeting. So, please, if you will make your way down immediately to City Council Chambers, Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. Mr. Weezer is excused today. Our agendas are available online 72 hours in advance, 24 hours for special items. And those can be received not only online but through the city clerk's office or here in council chambers. If you'd like to fill out a public speaker card on any of the items that have not yet had a hearing in committee, please do so with one of the cards in the back. And if you'll hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms, we'll be sure to hear your comments. Also, for general public comment, we take up items that are not on our agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction, to hear members of the public on those issues. Finally, if you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always come down to Van Nuys Council Chambers and testify remotely with our video conferencing capacity. And so, we invite members of the public to do that as well. And we meet there every first Friday of the month in our Van Nuys City Council Chambers. When we are there, you certainly can testify from here at City Hall, also via video conferencing. Again, I want to thank the council members who are here pursuant to council policy and our own internal rules on time. Those are council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Labange, Perry, and Zine. Mr. Weezer is excused today. That leaves Councilmember Gruel that we are waiting, Councilmember Parks we are waiting, Councilmember Reyes, if you will come down, Councilmember Rosendahl we are waiting, Councilmember Smith we are waiting, Councilmember Weiss we are waiting, and Councilmember Wesson we are awaiting. As soon as we have three more members, we will begin the meeting. We want to thank members of the public for their patience while we wait for those council members to arrive. Thank you again to council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Labange, Perry, and Zine. This is a second quorum call for our late council members, Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. You're all late. If you will please come down to council chambers immediately so we can begin the meeting. Thank you, Councilmember Smith. We are now awaiting one more council member. Councilmembers Gruel, Reyes, Rosendahl, Weiss, and Wesson. This is our third quorum call, and you are all late for council. If you'll make your way down immediately to council chambers. Councilmembers Gruel, Reyes, Rosendahl, Weiss, and Wesson, please join us immediately. We fail to meet a quorum by 10:15, we will not meet. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Ten members present and a quorum. Mr. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
From which meeting?
October 10.
Thank you. Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Labange seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute for today.
All right, if I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for a pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Reyes, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Council President. My honor, you stand right over your heart. Ready, begin. Pledge allegiance. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda first, and then we'll come back.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 12 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Items 1 through 12 have already received their public hearings in committee. Councilmembers, anybody wishing to call any of those special? If we can call 1 through 3 special. So, we'll wait 12 members for those ordinances. That leaves us 4 through 12. Any special items, colleagues? 4 through 12. Going once, going twice. If not, let's take up the balance. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 13 through 24 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, let's hold 13 and 14 as ordinances as well, awaiting 12 members. Specials, Mr. Smith?
Call 13 special anyway.
All right, I'll call that special for you as well, and make sure we hold that. We have cards on 19. Specials, colleagues? This is items 15 through 24. 15 through 24. If not, let's take up the balance. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item?
On the supplemental agenda, items 25 through 29 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Item 25 is the JEFF appeal. 10 votes are required for reinstatement.
There's no objection to, there's no objection to taking these items up. We have 25 through 29, seeing none. At least 10 members take that up. We have a card on item 25. Any specials? Ms. Han?
Which ones?
Item 27 for Ms. Han.
27 and 26?
And 26 as well.
Not all, I'm not here to, yet. I'm like, I need more coffee.
Any other specials, colleagues? That leaves us 28 and 29. And since those have urgency clauses, we'll have to hold those as ordinances till we have 12 members as well. Next item?
Item 30 is the closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. We'll hold item 30 for closed session. And that returns us to general public comment.
Questions?
Yes, Mr. Labange?
Number 12 concerning the bridges. Like to call that special, if you would.
Okay, we passed that, so we'll have to reconsider that. We can open the roll on reconsideration of 12, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
And we'll call that special for Mr. Labange.
The clerk could notify the Bureau of Engineering because maybe they heard us and went out of the room.
I think he's right there. I see our--
Good job.
Thank you. Our chief city engineer right there. Now, it's time for general public comment. Again, this is for items not on the agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. And Melrose Larry Green is our first speaker.
Good morning, everybody. I haven't been here for a while. I got to make a living. Unfortunately, I haven't been-- A couple of things. First of all, I want to say, my name is Melrose Larry Green. Good morning, President Garcetti. Great speech you gave at Christ the King Church last week, and I enjoyed it. Ed Reyes, right out of the bat. Congratulations on the great story on the carousel at Lincoln Park, formerly East, Los Angeles Park and Eastlake Park, now Lincoln Park. The carousel, great story. I never thought I'd be praising the LA Times, but Theresa Wan and Abi wrote a great story in Sunday's LA Times. And I got to applaud all of you for appropriating the money for that park. And I'm so proud to report that crime is down by 14% in violent crime from January to October compared to last year, and second-largest drop in the city, according to Captain Blake Chow of the Hullenbeck area. I only regret that nobody invited Melrose Larry Green to come, but I'll be there maybe this weekend. But congratulations on the carousel. I was so moved to hear that you, as young as a young lab, grew up there and went on that carousel, and it was just phenomenal. Secondly-- Secondly, I want to indicate to Councilman Labange, my councilman, that I'm working on my proposal for the Chuck Berry concert in Los Angeles. And I hope that we could do something either at the Kodak Theater or Division Theater in Councilman Parks District. I hope that you'll all fight over where the Chuck Berry concert will be held. That's how committed I am to this. And I promise you something within seven days. A budget proposal, and thank you for letting me in that parade with 10/4. I don't want to get on item number 19 now because this is public comment, but I just want to say, as a Republican, I hope that Mayor Vierigosa will be as courteous to Barack Obama and to Rudy Giuliani and to Mitt Romney and to Dennis Kucinich as he has been to Hillary Clinton in doing appearances in the city of LA. And you all know I love Mayor Vierigosa. I have 12 seconds, which I will yield in honor of Code Pink. I'm wearing a pink tie and a pink shirt today, but I don't really support them. Thank you. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you for the four seconds. We appreciate it. Matthew Dowd is our next speaker.
Thanks, Melrose Larry. Could have given those four seconds to me. God knows, I could use them. But no, I'm just talking off the top of my head today. Got my street gear, I'm not following the dress code. I just want to say that January 29, 2006, that was the first time that we came down here. And, you know, we're talking about this beach ordinance, and the city attorney last week said that the council hadn't suspended that ordinance because the judge didn't make a ruling. But LAPD made a ruling. We've got an ad hoc injunction from them. I've been out on the beach doing exactly what I was doing for the whole time, for six months now. So we've got an injunction from LAPD. They're not talking to anybody because they get complaints filed on them. But your attorneys, they're making a new ordinance now, and it's even more restrictive on more people than this one we just defeated. Now, the judge told them to make up another ordinance, so that's got to tell you the one you had was no good. But there's legal reasons why he's not delivering that judgment on paper. So I'm just warning the city council on the record that the city attorneys have no written guidance to bring in what they're introducing. So it's going to be tough to defend as opposed to the judgments that have already been delivered in the district court and in the Ninth Circuit. And we're up to 565 days, so forget May 1, MacArthur Park, Carol Sobel, those people were violated for like an hour or two. Michael Hunt's 565 days and counting. Thank you, Eric.
Our next speaker is Michael Hunt. After that will be Yvonne Michelle Autry.
Let's go back to the 565 days, and my name is Michael Hunt. I'm the guy that civil rights been violated for 565 days with an ordinance that is unconstitutional, what the city attorney is unconstitutional. What they practice is hatred. What they do is arrest people who like to work and take care of their families. What's being done about it, little or nothing. The city attorney's office have come up with an ordinance that is probably still unconstitutional and that will probably still face constitutional challenges in the legal, in the court system. We are looking forward to actually challenging the next ordinance as well. My suggestion is that we drafted up an ordinance, we are the real people who actually work down there, and we know better than the city attorney who sits here in his office and does nothing and tell people, you know, that this is correct and this is valid. Well, it's not correct, neither is it valid, and it involves people's constitutional rights. And when the second largest city is violating people's constitutional rights in a capricious way, then it brings out the outlaws. But you guys heard the story, you guys know about it. We wrote an ordinance that will sustain any kind of constitutional challenge and has value to it. So just pay attention to what we're saying so Mr. Hunt can go home and go to work and become the American dream again. You guys know what's going on. The only valid ordinance is the one that we wrote. We gave it to Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Yvonne Michelle Autry is our next speaker. Is Ms. Autry here? Coming right there. After that, we'll go to Van Nuys, and our next speaker will be Miriam Fogler from our Van Nuys City Council Chambers.
Good morning again. For the record, my name is Yvonne Michelle Autry. Thank you for an opportunity to address the council. And I do think that, I just heard the end of the prior comments, but civil rights of all Americans seem to be under attack at this time. When I consider what's happening with the Geneseecks, I consider what happened to the survivors of Katrina, who were mistreated and treated as enemies of the state, which is the way the Jewish people were treated prior to their incineration. I think that we're in a very dangerous time in America. With the advent of the most recent antics of the police department here downtown, it seems as though it has been a hidden reversal of the advancements that were made 20, 30, 40 years ago, specifically for black people, people of color, and all Americans. It just seems to be a very blatant violation of civil rights for all of us, because when one suffers all, but especially for black people, poor people, people that are impoverished, it seems as if white supremacy, racism is encouraged. Police officers now are filing complaints against victims who are brutalized. Small women who are being beaten by five and six police officers are then accused of assault on the officers, when I find it hard to believe that six police officers cannot adequately subdue and restrain a five-foot-two woman, because I'm five-foot-two, and I know that we cannot do that much damage. It's ridiculous. I think it's a travesty of justice, and obviously, you're tolerating it. Again, if you would house the homeless, you would not have to deploy additional police officers, and you would not have to incur that additional expense. Obviously, you want the homeless, as I don't know if it's human harvest, I don't know where they're being taken. If you would maintain affordable housing, then there wouldn't be a potential crisis of homelessness in the future for those that need affordable housing. It's very obvious, but you're denying the obvious, and you're creating the blight, and you're responsible for it.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Our next speaker is going to be out in Van Nuys, Miriam Fogler. And after Miriam Fogler will be Donna Perman. Good morning.
Well, I don't know how we can house the homeless if they keep raising the taxes, folks. Take a look at your article here in the Daily News. I know it's October 3, but it was very good through the City Hall, means that anybody that liked the Pierce case, this is ridiculous. I fell down in the market. I didn't get that kind of money. I don't see how he should, I have a torn cartilage. I don't see how he should be getting more money than me. And then, I have a physical problem with it now. And then you, 20, you had that spoken committee so that nobody could speak on special events. I'm going to speak about it here. I'm going to say this is outrageous, to charge to pay $28,000 for the annual Watts Willowbrook Christmas Parade. And, yeah, it's just example of all the monies that are going, we'd have money all the doing this. And also, the city workers were informed by the union last week that they, the 501 man, he said if the city's in the plus, then they'll get the raises. If the city's a minus, then they won't get the raises, and they should be, and they would never catch up with DWP, and the disparity continues. And of course, you guys here, here around the horse, you got $40,000 the last two years. You can send back that money. You don't, you're the only ones that can afford these taxes, so why don't we just pass the taxes on to you and leave the public alone? Because after all, my property taxes went up $120, more than I ever been in the last 20 or years I ever lived here in California. If you see your property tax bill, it went up the most this year. And we got to put a stop to this and put the two-thirds vote back in with 13 had in there, and have them stop leaving, have them stop and leave 13 alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Donna Perman, also out in Van Nuys City Council Chambers.
Hello, Garcetti. I love your time. Anyway, city council, see, conditions are put on the city employees. The city has a minus, city employees get punished. Are you saying that city employees are the reason there's a shortfall? How come you don't lower your pay or perks if there's a shortfall? And how come we pay for useless lawsuits? By the way, thank you, Councilman Zine, for being against the Pierce case. Takes a lot of guts to see this as a useless lawsuit. And I'm against letting the homeless sleep on the sidewalks. My boss, who is in Garcetti's district, really hates that people who don't have restrooms to use will use sidewalks, and people will be begging people for food because they don't have any food, it's dangerous, and it's bad for the health of the people who are homeless. I also agree that places should be figured out so that they could sleep, not be sleeping on the sidewalks. And I guess, oh, Samyordi?
Go to Samyordi.
Oh, go to Samyordi dot com.
Zuma Dog is alive and well.
Oh, yes, Zuma Dog is alive and well. We just talked to him. He's over there visiting his family over there in the East Coast. So he's going to be coming back again, so, oh, boy, about that. And, oh, yeah, and I guess the CRA, and I guess adding up new taxes and having the CRA build a whole bunch of buildings over there that's not needed just so that we can raise our taxes. So, all right, that's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perman. That closes our general public comment for today. We have a number of items we held for 12 members, one through three, which had already received public hearing before. If nobody wishes to call those special, we can now take those up. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, would you like to take up item 14, 28, and 29 as well?
Sure, that would be great. 28, 29, 14 along with those. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those items are approved. If we can go to the first item called special, please.
That is item 12, and that was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Okay. Mr. Labange, item number 12.
Gary Lee Moore, to come to the table and just give us a quick update.
Good morning, Gary Moore, city engineer, Bureau of Engineering. We've submitted a report to you this morning on the status of bridges and tunnels in the city of Los Angeles, and I was hoped to be joined by Caltrans here this morning, and I'm sure they're very busy with I-5, so hopefully Doug Failing will be able to be here. For the city of Los Angeles, we have 600 and, I'm sorry, we have 602 bridges and tunnels, 567 bridges and 35 tunnels. Of these bridges, Caltrans inspects 420 of these, and of these inspections of the bridges, they've identified 17 that they call structurally deficient. This is not going, the bridge is not ready to collapse. For instance, what they found in these bridges, that some of these bridges need the joints repaired, there's potholes on the deck, and all 17 bridges are currently being addressed. So that's very important for everybody to know. And we continue to partner with Caltrans on these bridges. Some of these bridges that they've identified as structurally deficient will actually be widening them and also seismically upgrading those bridges also. So that's a very quick snapshot on the status of the bridges here that are owned by the city of Los Angeles.
All right, Gary, wrap it down quick, the 17 bridges, name them.
17 bridges, there's the Winnetka Avenue Bridge in Council District 3, there's the Bradley Avenue Bridge in Council District 7, the Riverside Drive Bridge in CD1 in Council District 1, the Anaheim Street Bridge, Council District 15, the Inglewood Bridge, Council District 11, the Fourth Street Viaduct, Council District 9, the Fourth Street Viaduct over Flower, Council District 9, the Conterra Street Bridge in Council District 6, the Laurel Canyon over the Los Angeles River, Council District 2, the White Oak Bridge, Council District 12, the Fairfax Bridge in Council District 10, the Platte Avenue Bridge in Council District 3, the Tampa Avenue Bridge over Limekill in Council District 12, the Devonshire Bridge in Council District 12, the Balboa Bridge over San Fernando Road in Council District 12, the Marmion Bridge over the Arroyo in Council District 14, and finally, the Jefferson Bridge over the Sentinel Creek in Council District 11.
I got to ask you, yeah, I've had series of meetings with your staff on the Glendale Hyperion Bridge and on the Riverside Drive Bridge, where it goes into the gateway to the San Fernando Valley and Victory Boulevard. They are not in critical condition, or how would you term this?
What Caltrans has, from their inspection, called them, let's take the Riverside Bridge, structurally deficient. And what they've identified here is there's some asphalt concrete that needs to be repaired.
Riverside Drive at Victory Boulevard in Griffith Park, not to be confused with Riverside Drive in the First District, Elysian Valley to Cypress.
I was talking about the Council District 1 bridge.
I know, but I want to talk about the one on 4 that I've been meeting with your staff. I want to talk about Glendale Hyperion that I've been meeting with your staff.
That is not one of the bridges that is currently as what we call structurally deficient.
But we're going through all this process, and I love the bridges and I appreciate it, and we go through a community process. Now, should I pull back and say, don't work on the Glendale Hyperion and work on these other, or what are we doing? Because we're going, one of my criticisms, Gary, is we start working on projects, and there's money, and then there's no money, and then we're not going to do the project, and then we are. We engage the community, and then we're not. So I need to know, because I wanted to make sure, A, we have safe bridges, and B, we restore them historically, that was championed by Clark Robbins. Now John Coe, correct, is now a bridge man who's championed that as well through your leadership.
Yes, sir. We can work on your bridge in...
No, it's the city's bridge.
In the city's bridge in Council District Number 4. That bridge there is, what we're doing with that bridge is seismically upgrading that bridge, and we most definitely should go forward with that bridge. And once again, is, we have a very proactive approach to the bridge program, and we don't wait for the bridges to fall in what we call the structurally deficient category. We're looking at them into the future, because we know what an important artery it is, as we've seen in Highway 5 here.
Right. Okay, Mr. President, I'm going to push my button again, I have a few more questions. I ran out of time, right?
It's all right, you can press your button again. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you, Mr. Labange, for some of those questions. I introduced this motion just after the Minneapolis collapse and the challenges faced there and unexpected things that occurred. And just to make sure that our constituents and others knew we were doing what we could to fix some of our bridges. And Doug Failing, who's head of Caltrans here, was at a press conference, which he's still at, and was going to make his way over here, so he may or may not be here during this period of time. I know that we had Prop G money, correct?
Yes.
And do we have any of that money left? Could you give us a kind of status quo on that and hold my time, Mr. President?
Yes.
Hold my time? Thank you.
Prop G was passed by the voters, and it was to aid in the repair of bridges and also seismically upgrade buildings. And some of that funding was, for instance, used in the rehabilitation of City Hall. What we've used the seismic money for in the bridge program is matching funds. We leverage those funds. The federal government on most of these bridges gives us between 80 to 88% of the money, and the rest of the money comes from local match. One of the local matches that we use is the Prop G money. And so, yes, there is still money, and we're still continuing to use that money to finish the construction on about 40 bridges.
And I know, and as Mr. Labange asked, you know, one of the challenges, we had a lot of bridges proposed to be repaired, and then the money was kind of lost there for a while, and we kind of trying to get back to that area, because I had several bridges in my district that we had designed, gone out to the public, said we're going to redo. Can you let us know where are we on the federal dollars related to that and state?
There's still 24 bridges that we say that are identified that we'd like to do seismic strengthening and upgrade that are actually on hold because we lost the local match. And that local match was actually coming from the state of California through the state's local seismic safety retrofit program. And so, in 2003, because they cut that funding, these bridges have been placed on hold. Until we find a local match, these bridges will continue to be on hold. Until we find a local match, these bridges will continue to be on hold.
And there were a couple bridges, I know one, mine at Colfax, there at the river, particularly, there were a couple that were considered, I wouldn't say ready to fall down because we would not allow them, but there were a few that were identified, and all the TV cameras went out to them. It was Colfax, and what was the other one in the city of Los Angeles?
Colfax and also the Riverside Bridge were, are similar design to what we saw in Minneapolis. The Colfax Bridge, as we're going out for the construct.
Yes.
That's right. It's scheduled for, John Coe with the Bureau of Engineering, is planned for construction next year.
Next year, great.
But once again, both of these bridges were immediately, when we saw the Minneapolis, we partnered with Caltrans and went to both of these bridges and did another inspection on them to make sure they're safe.
And how often are you going to inspect these? What's your normal course of?
The normal cycle, Caltrans and the city, is a two-year cycle on bridge inspections. What we'll do on these two bridges, and especially on the Colfax Bridge, since we know that it's coming up for, we'll be out there every few months just to make sure that it's safe and ensure the safety to the public.
That would be great, and I think that that's really our intention here, and when I introduce this motion, was to, one, educate all of us about some of the challenges we have in funding those bridge replacements or reconstruction, whatever it may be, or shoring up as we are in some of those areas. But secondly, so that all of us can continue to advocate on the state and federal level for the dollars necessary. And then lastly, to make the public feel comfortable that in fact our bridges are safe, that we are watching them, that we're going every few months on those, that we're similar to those in Minneapolis, and to be able to say we're doing everything we can. And sometimes a crisis that happens in another part of this country allows us to look at what we're doing, to make sure that in fact we are on our game and protecting the lives of our residents. And so I appreciate your very quick response in the initial motion when this went to our committee, and I know we've been working very cooperatively with Caltrans, and I'll give a shout out to Doug again, who's helping deliver a hundred and fifty million dollars to us right now for synchronized lights, which we know is going to be a great asset to the city of Los Angeles. So, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I encourage you to keep in contact with engineering and for engineering to let us know when there are critical points in which we can advocate, in which we need to support further funding for our bridges here in Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gruel, our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, indeed, this motion we put in, I did, from Public Works and my colleague did from Transportation, and we did a joint strategy on this. Bottom line was, we want to learn from what happened in Minnesota so it doesn't happen here. Okay, we have over five hundred bridges, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and have we looked at absolutely every one of them now and feel comfortable we won't have a disaster like that?
We are, we continue to inspect all the bridges, and we feel comfortable that the bridges are in good shape and safe for the traveling public.
And the one, that's a big one over there, the San Pedro, you feel comfortable about that one? As Janice Hawn would care about.
I will have to try to qualify. In the city of Los Angeles, the city is responsible, owns or is responsible for six hundred bridges.
Right.
There's actually another thousand bridges that Caltrans has over the freeway system. The Vincent Thomas Bridge is another great example of that. And in those notes there, once again, receiving some information from Doug Failing, of those thousand and ten bridges, only fifty-two of those are what they call, once again, structurally deficient. Nothing where they expect any collapse, because once again, Caltrans is talking to Doug, they would immediately shut those down. So between the two agencies, we feel comfortable that right now all the bridges are safe to be traveling on.
Those six hundred bridges and a thousand more from Caltrans, that's a lot of bridges. And we have gone out and inspected, especially those that we felt historically they could have used retrofitting, they could have done this, and they're okay.
Yes, we have gone out, and especially after what we saw in Minneapolis, we worked together to make sure that extra inspections took place.
Okay. I just want to thank you, Gary Moore, for what you did with Manuel Canyon the other day. You cleaned up that act, got the left-hand turn signal, and finished the opening there. Appreciate that. And all of the other left-hand turn signals we're getting, and all the other work that your great department has done. My constituents are quite happy for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Labange for a second time.
Yeah, thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, sir.
One point here, when the earthquake comes, there's going to be a challenge.
That's right.
Lucy Jones says another earthquake's going to come. Are our bridges earthquake safe? Because there was a program that we had that upgraded to put more steel after the last ninety-four quake. These are seventeen Minneapolis-type viaducts and also bridges that are there. Tell us, because I think the public wants to know, and it's fascinating, I think, to know the facts so we could prepare.
In 2002, we identified eighty-three bridges for seismic strengthening. Twelve of those bridges have been completed. Thirteen of them are in construction, thirty-four are in design, and I, as I indicated to Council woman Gruel, twenty-four of those bridges are on hold. So the answer to your question, we are in the middle of a seismic upgrade of these bridges, and we will continue to be vigilant in our inspection program so that we don't have an unsafe condition. But if there's a major earthquake, yes, we are vulnerable.
Major things will happen.
Major things will happen.
What do you do if there's an earthquake and you're on a bridge?
The best thing to do is, one is to remain calm if there's an earthquake, and secondly, as the shaking has stopped, is to safely move off the bridge. That's the most important thing to do.
Mr. Moore, joining us is Doug Failing right now. We're in the middle of this discussion, Doug, but I do want to, here's Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, sir.
Speaking with you. Members, if I could just digress just a little bit, there was a tragedy on Interstate Five this weekend, as you know, and you and your Caltrans and the California Highway Patrol, Los Angeles County Fire Department, Los Angeles City Fire Department, other entities all work together. So I personally wanted to say that, now that I happen to have the microphone, to you, Doug, and your staff, and the troubles that took place there, the tragedies to the families, and the work that has to be done in the future. With that being said, I just want to make sure we are on top of this all the time, because when the earthquake does come, we got to know what we didn't do, you know, and to come to head with it, because there's six hundred bridges that we have. How many bridges do you have in your division?
I have, in my division, I have four thousand seventy-one bridges.
So that's a lot of bridges.
I have a lot of bridges.
Right, and how many of them are upgraded now, would you think?
All of the bridges in District Seven have been retrofitted fully to current seismic standards. Every time seismic standards change and we do something on a bridge, we do revisit that bridge, with the exception of one bridge. That bridge is the Heim Bridge, Commodore Heim Bridge, coming out of the ports of LA and Long Beach up north towards Wilmington. We have an environmental document that's been circulated, and we're preparing to actually replace that bridge.
And who owns the Barham Bridge, do we know?
I'm sorry?
The Barham Bridge over the Highway 101. We designed it in the 50s when the freeway ran to that point. Is it our bridge or your bridge?
Do you want it, sir?
Say it again.
If you would like it, I can make it your bridge in case I think it's mine. Certainly, we work very well together with the city, and Barham Bridge is probably mine structurally. It's the simplest spanned bridge, right?
Right.
Yeah, and we've done the, we've done the scoping document on it, so yes, that one's my bridge.
Yeah, I just think we haven't done anything since 1952. We haven't done anything since we closed the off-ramps there. We got to clean up the circulation because of the congestion there and the pinch point was there. But also, I think we should just recognize it. I just want, first, thank you on your busy schedule for being here, and Gary, thank you for your leadership, John, and your leadership too. I'm going to be on this, bridges, because I got a lot of bridges in my district, and I think it's something we have to push for. We have invested in it, right? We have a bond issue in the city of Los Angeles for bridges?
We use the Prop G seismic. There isn't a specific bond that was passed just for the bridges. We use the seismic Prop G as the matching funds in our bridges.
Is there still money in that?
Yes.
Good, okay. Okay, let's inform the public so that we do that, make the investment in bonds to help make bridges safely. Thank you, Mr. President, and Doug, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Labange.
Thank you. We have Mr. Reyes, Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosendahl, and Ms. Gruel in that order.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, welcome Doug to our chamber. It's good to have you. I know you're real busy with all the issues hitting our Interstate Five, and it's great to react and see it cleaned up, and hopefully they'll assess it so we can use it again. But my question really points to the notion of how we're using our bridges and our designs. I wanted to also thank Gary, you're one of the unsung heroes in the river plan process. You've been the major spark plug, the quarterback, all kinds of adjectives, I'm going to throw that to you. What's great about that whole scenario of working and seeing both of you here at the table is that the assertion that we have to widen or retrofit our bridges to allow for more vehicles, which is the goal, correct? But can we use these funds to essentially repair and retrofit so that we can also include bicyclists? We can include pedestrian access, especially in connection to the river, since they were built to get over it quickly. Are we in a position to look at our resources to take this opportunity as we redesign and rebuild and expand to include those other features? If we have, are we doing it?
Yeah, yes, Councilmember Reyes. Certainly, as we widen and expand bridges, that is one of the key things we should be looking at is alternative modes of transportation such as bicycles, pedestrian, and other accesses, particularly in areas where we know we have major needs, such as the LA River Trails, which we appreciate the city working so hard on. Most of the types of funds that we use for widening of bridges are, can be used as well for adding those types of facilities. The types of funds that are generally restricted are straight maintenance type of funds, where we're merely making repairs to an existing bridge. Those types of funds are generally prohibited from adding capacity, even bicycle and pedestrian capacity, although if it exists, we can make it better.
Great, so, in our ability to use these funds, can we leverage those funds to attract those kinds of physical changes, so we're not limited?
Yes, Councilmember, we can, and in fact, there are certain programs that we have available that are specifically geared towards bicycles and other types of facilities. And if we can leverage existing fund types so that we're able to put a package together, that works very well, and that's certainly something that we would encourage, and we'd be happy to partner with the city on.
Are there pots of funds that we should be identifying, where we could lobby and essentially push for, given the disproportionate amount of traffic and pollution issues that emanate from Southern California?
Yes, sir, there are pots of funds that we could identify and be lobbying for, and trust me, you do very well lobbying already, but I will be happy to sit down and look at some of the less well-known ones. We'll provide city staff with some information so that they can report to the council members on how we can maybe go at this together.
Thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Gary, I just, I know I've run out of time, but I wanted to ask you, the Riverside Bridge on CD One, you have the Main Street Bridge over by Chinatown, the cornfield, the key bridge is connecting two major parks that have been introduced to the city. What are our timeframes like in moving those projects?
On the Riverside Bridge, we're what, one year?
We're scheduled to construction in 2009.
2009s.
And we're happy to say that we've been able to add a, working very closely with you and your office, to add a bike lane on the Riverside Bridge. I think it was a great challenge that you brought before us, and that's a thank you.
That's a tough confluence, but again, thank you so much, and appreciate your hard work.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted, Mr. Failing, how are you doing?
Mr. Parks.
I just wanted to ask, in dealing, a lot of conversations about bridges because of Minnesota, on the other hand, are we as comfortable with the tunnels that are in our area, and do we inspect them at the same rate? What, is it every two years?
Yes, sir, we inspect the tunnels on, with the same frequency, as you said, every two years, and right now, in the city of Los Angeles, there are thirty-five tunnels, seven of which Caltrans is responsible for inspecting, and the other twenty-eight the city inspects, and so, yes, there are.
The inspections are kind of broken up between Caltrans, the city of LA. How do we communicate so that, and do we use the same standards, the same terminology, so that we're familiar that if they declare something one way, we support that, or how do we communicate that?
Doug and his staff and our staff in the Bureau of Engineering have developed a wonderful working relationship, and basically, bridges that are, we say wider, that have a span greater than twenty feet are the responsibility of Caltrans to inspect. That's the demarcation, and the same would go with tunnels. Then they share their reports with us, we get those on a regular basis. We then turn those into capital projects, it's a major project, or we then work with the Bureau of Street Services and Bill Robertson on repairs. And so we have an excellent relationship, and yes, we do follow the same standards on our inspections as Caltrans.
We agree absolutely with what Gary said.
Okay, let me just ask one thing. When we use the term structurally deficient, is that a term that, for liability's sake, puts us on constructive notice that if something happens in the future, that we're digging ourselves a hole or putting ourselves in a position to where it's more difficult to defend ourselves?
I don't think that that term puts us on any more of a line of constructive notice than any other term that we might use. The term, the way we use the term structurally deficient does not mean there's a strength issue necessarily with the bridge, but it indicates there's something within the bridge that needs some attention. So the structure is in some way, shape, or form deficient, not necessarily a strength issue, certainly.
This is just from a layperson's standpoint? When you hear about Minnesota falling and people talk about the structural, when we use the term structurally deficient, the first thing I would think about is the structure of the bridge has a problem as opposed to the paving might be bad. And I just wonder if that is a hole that we create for ourselves down the road because of a term that we use?
Certainly, myself and Will Kempton agree with you. I'm not able to convince my structures engineers yet that that's a problem.
And then let me ask you, what is, what is the term, I was reading the functionally obsolete, is that just that it doesn't provide as much service, or what does that term mean?
It means that the carrying capacity has reached a point where we should widen the bridge, basically, that it's functionally obsolete from the number of cars that are going across. We probably need to widen the bridge.
So it basically doesn't serve the intended purpose because of the increased flow?
And as you've heard, many of the bridges date back to the twenties, thirties, forties, and fifties when the major arteries were put in.
And then Gary, let me ask you, on your report to us on page four, you listed a number of issues looking at status of funding and dealing with the, I guess, the middle one, about the two-hundred-and-fifty million is needed for the twenty-four projects on hold. Is the matching fund an expectation to come from the city or a special fund? Are we going to seek those funds outside of the city?
That, right now, we've estimated of the two-hundred-and-fifty million, the twenty-six million would be needed for the local match, and when we say local match, it'd be non-federal. That was what we lost from the state in 2003. So right now, we have not identified where we can find that twenty-six million, so if we can find it, if the state reestablished that program, or if we had some.
So when you say local, it could, local means the state as opposed to just defining it as a city?
That's right. It can be basically the city, the county, or the state as the local match.
Do we have any sense of whether, because these are going to have to be done, the reality of those funds coming back, or what our avenues are?
I guess, for us right now, we haven't seen the funds become available at the state level. I think it's incumbent on us as staff to bring that information to this council and to the mayor so that the advocacy can be there. We'll also, if, right now, we don't see any of, within the city, we have not identified any of the matching funds necessary to go forward.
Okay, is the likelihood that it could fall on the city totally for the matching?
At the state level, we'd like to think that's very important, and we would encourage you to be focused in that direction.
Okay, is it, so Gary, we depend on you to give us the vehicle so that we can, whether that's legislation or whatever, so that we can begin to look at that and find out how we might support that?
We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn is next, and then Mr. Rosendahl for a second time, and Ms. Gruel for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think initially, I heard the report about the Vincent Thomas Bridge, but why don't you explain to the people that take that on a regular basis, what's the status of the Vincent Thomas Bridge?
That's yours, huh?
Yeah. Vincent Thomas is mine.
I know, but despite the fact it has great lights.
Yes, it does. The one that looks really nice. The one that looks really nice down there. The Vincent Thomas Bridge itself is on the structurally deficient list. The problem we have with the Vincent Thomas Bridge is the decking in and of itself has been cracking. There is, it is structurally sound, and in fact, it went through a full retrofit and is a very structurally sound bridge. The, and it's a very neat bridge, too, by the way. I really like it. It's really cool up under there. But the issue with that bridge is the deck itself, and we have programmed a project for $13 million to rehabilitate that bridge deck. It bids were opened on that project actually September 27th of 2007, so the bids have opened and we anticipate.
And what will that mean to rehabilitate that bridge?
That, usually that bridge, well, we're using one of two materials, either a polyester resin or a methacrylate material, which we place on top of the bridge and it soaks down into the cracks and it seals it up and it takes care of the crack issues and restores the structural, destroys the integrity of the deck itself. And I'm pretty sure we're using the polyester resin on that bridge.
I know Tom Labontes didn't take credit for owning a bridge earlier, but Vincent Thomas Bridge really is my bridge. In fact, when my grandchildren used to come over from Long Beach, they knew when they hit that bridge, they were on their way to Mimi's house. Let me just make a comment about the Commodore Heim Bridge. We know that that is up for replacement. However, everyone should know that one of the projects on the drawing board is the SR-47, which will not only replace the Commodore Heim Bridge, but also, as part of that project, build a expressway for trucks and cars coming to and from the Port of Los Angeles. Many of us who feel that the goods movement effort in and around Southern California is kind of experiencing, could be a perfect storm out there in terms of our infrastructure and the volume of cargo that is expected to increase in the coming years. We're out there, the Alameda Corridor Transportation Authority, of which I am the vice chair this year, is seeking funds to replace the bridge as well as build a project that will relieve the truck traffic both on the 710, the 110, and hopefully will also cure a major problem, which is a lot of those trucks driving through the Wilmington neighborhoods to avoid the congestion on the 710 coming in and out of the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles. So that's a great project. I hope I have my council support as we also lobby for the funds to build something, which I think ultimately is critical for goods movement in and around Southern California.
Thank you, Councilmember Hahn. Actually, the state's very aware of the issues associated with diesel particulate matter, mobile source air toxics, as we call them. And we actually appreciate the partnership we've had with the Alameda Corridor Transportation Authority in being able to work at doing exactly as you said, find ways that we can move those trucks out of the neighborhoods, provide a much better environment, and deal with the mobile source air toxics issues with our surrounding goods movement where we always know we will be a portal. So we're always going to have to address it, and this is a very proactive matter. We appreciate your efforts.
Right, because we actually, with the corridor, we all, there was a lot of money spent improving Alameda, the street, but what we're finding is, still, that is not good enough for a lot of the trucks. And this SR-47 will kind of close that gap. And I love it because it really dumped the trucks right on the terminal island. So it will completely take them off the surrounding streets. So I think it's a very smart project, and we'd love to have your support as we move forward with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, just a final comment. Doug, I saw you coming in there with fanfare and all. Tell us real quickly what you just did.
This, I was over attending an event with the governor and the mayor and Speaker Fabian Nunez, where we announced that $150 million will be made available to the city of Los Angeles to compete, complete your signal synchronization system. The mayor and the city staff have been pushing very hard. You're on a very expedited schedule, which the mayor has assured the public will be expedited even more. So it was a very great event, a very great event for the city of Los Angeles, but for those of us in the state, a great day for us as well.
Well, we want to thank you and the governor and the speaker as well. You went down to City Hall East, four floors. Where were you?
I was, I was standing off on the left, kind of out of the camera angle.
Yeah, but that's where all the.
We were there in the ATSEC system, beautiful system, by the way, you have here.
Explain that real quickly.
You are to be commended. The automated traffic control and surveillance system the city has is actually state-of-the-art, probably the best in the world at this point in time as far as being able to remotely manage what's happening on your traffic system. You have some 4,000 signals, if I recall what the mayor said, that are all coordinated through that system. You're receiving information remotely. You're able to adjust traffic in real time so that you can modify per changing conditions and make traffic flow better, which reduces congestion, which improves air quality.
Fabulous. So we will have our lights synchronized, and we will, again, have our left-hand turn signals, and we will have some immediate relief.
Yes, sir.
Very good, very good, very good. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Another quick thing, the 101 and the 405, the most congested spot in America. How are we doing on working that issue?
And Mr. Rosendahl, I do have to gently remind everybody that the item is just on bridges today, so we can't be out of order on that.
I just want to thank you for your leadership with us on that.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, no problem. Thank you. Ms. Gruel is next, and then Mr. Labontes.
Okay, I was going to close, so do you want to go ahead, Mr. Labontes?
Doug, I know Ms. Hahn was talking about the Vincent Thomas Bridge. I like to call it the St. Vincent Thomas Bridge because Bobby De Niro called it that in Heat, when they use that in a film. But all bridges are important, all tunnels are important, and our history of our city is important. We built the tunnels of what was Figueroa Street Viaduct, which now you own.
Right.
Which the great seal is. And I would love to have you come back one day because Mr. Rosendahl was taking off issues on, not on the agenda, but I'd love to talk about the graffiti challenge that you have destroying and the landscape destruction of the once beautiful parkways that the Caltrans had. Thank you for your service, and please thank your staff, too.
Thank you, sir.
You very stand out.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you colleagues. And Doug, I'm glad you were able to make it over here. This is his first time in city council chambers, correct?
That is correct.
So we welcome you, and we welcome you back. And I think, as Mr. Labontes has said, and Rosendahl, and many others, the relationship between Caltrans and the city of Los Angeles is critically important, not only with DOT, but clearly with Bureau of Engineering. And particularly, I know you work for a statewide organization, but you have demonstrated your effective lobbying for the area in which you represent and making sure we get our fair share. And prior to coming here, we're talking about so many of our bridges that are in, you know, need repair. I won't say desperate repair, but there are a few that are more important than others that are moving forward. But that, you let us know when there are points of entry, so to speak, that we can step up and support you in some of the things that you're doing. Because as Ms. Hahn and I were talking about, you've been one of the best regional, you know, Caltrans directors we've ever had. And we want to thank you because you have been open and transparent and worked with us on a number of projects and been very, I think, gracious in trying to work with us. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruel. As we all know, I don't lobby, I'm not allowed to.
That's correct.
But certainly, I look for opportunities and make sure they're known.
Information is power.
Information is power. Only when shared.
Information, you can provide it and share it, yes, with us. And I think particularly on some of these bridges that are so important, and the one that is in, you know, Ms. Hahn's district is clearly one that everyone kind of knows is a bridge, it looks like a bridge. Some of these others, they drive over and they don't realize it's actually a bridge over a river, and why that is. And we have a controversial one in my district that they're pounding away, which I just want to warn all of you, you get your bridges fixed, there are some challenges with that as they're trying to put those piles in. As I live a block away, I can hear it on a daily basis. But it is for the betterment of that community and safety of that. Are there other things that we can do in my, we need time here, and that we can do as a city to help you in some of those bridges that are kind of multi-jurisdictional and responsibility? Just to roll my time.
Yes, you can. And thank you for the question. You know, I do have 4,071 state bridges here in Los Angeles County, an additional 301 in Ventura County, but the city of Los Angeles has 1,010 of those state bridges, so 23% of significant portion of my work is here in the city of Los Angeles. And in fact, many of my more significant bridges, whether it's the Santa Monica Viaduct, the Vincent Thomas Bridge, Wilmington Overhead, 5101 Interchange, there's a lot of very significant bridges here within this region. And it does receive a much higher proportion of our time than other portions of the district does, just because it is so important to us here. We work very well with the city, both the Bureau of Engineering and LA DOT. We have a couple of multi-jurisdictional bridges. Sixth Street was an example where we've, and I think we're still working through a couple of small issues on types of funds that I can't spend, that the city can spend, yet you've got a joint-issue bridge, and how can we, how can we put together a package that works well for us? There's, in that case, we found a method, I think, that's helped us work through, but there will be some points in the future that we may need to step up. I believe in that case, we're actually considering making you owners of the bridge for a short period of time, at least enough time to be able to get the money spent.
We don't mind owning it as long as you pay for, all of the maintenance and upkeep and.
We can talk, we should talk. So we're taking, so would that work with us for a period of time? There's other things where we do that, but it's more of a case-by-case opportunistic issue that we're going to work with. Overall, overall, right now, it's going very well. I have, particularly on bridges, I don't have any issues I think we need to take on. The, although it's not on the agenda, the example earlier of signal synchronization, where we're working very closely with the city, or something where I think we have far more opportunities and we're being far more effective right now.
Great. Well, we, thank you very much for being here today, and we'll welcome you back. And you came to committee, but we were on another item that took a long time, so apologize for that. But I know on the Colfax Bridge, in fact, we're not widening, we're widening a little bit, but not for another lane, but it is going to include a bike area, you know, bike lanes on both sides to be able to accommodate that on the Colfax Bridge. And just lastly, I want to thank you, although not on the agenda, but for getting the five reopened by Monday morning. I know at 4:00 AM, because someone told me they were literally there about ready to go side streets, and then CHP said it's opening up right now. A tragedy that we all watched in horror, but I think Caltrans did a great job in trying to get it back for the early morning commute yesterday.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruel. I will pass it on to staff who, and a number of people who worked very, very hard.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right. Mr. Labontes?
I know, just real quick, I know you're close. Real quick, one, two, three, your favorite bridges in Los Angeles, which one?
My, which one in your district was that again? We talked about Tom before I walked in.
No, no, which one in the city?
City of Los, I liked the Vincent Thomas Bridge.
Vincent Thomas Bridge, okay, Gary?
First Street.
First Street Bridge?
Glendale Hyperion.
Say it again?
Glendale Hyperion.
Glendale Hyperion, okay. Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, engineers.
Thank you. We'll now have this item before us to receive and file. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
We will receive and file that one. I had a request to take item 19 next, out of order. Is there any objection to taking up item 19? If not, I'd like to begin by recognizing the maker of the motion, Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, on item 19.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, many of you have seconded the motion, first, the original motion and the substitute motion. The substitute motion brings us up to date on the facts. But today, the city of Los Angeles is sending a message loud and clear: end the war in We are calling for an immediate and complete withdrawal of the United States military personnel from Iraq. We have lost too many of our young men and women to this illegal and unjust war. Supporting our troops does not mean keeping them in Iraq. Supporting our troops means taking them out of this war and bringing them home. Since the start of this war, more than 3,500 members of the United States Armed Forces have been killed, and more than 25,300 have been wounded. Approximately 409 soldiers from California have been killed in Iraq. This includes 115 soldiers from the Los Angeles area and 25 soldiers from the city of Los Angeles, of whom 18 were under the ages of 24 years old. We want our troops and our resources here where they belong. Mr. President, the United States has spent more than $458 billion on this war and is currently spending $2 billion per week to occupy Iraq. As a result, more than $4.5 billion in tax revenues have been diverted from Los Angeles to support the war. This is unconscionable. This war has diverted funds that could be used for important domestic needs that would improve the quality of life for Los Angeles residents. $4.5 billion would pay for 3,000 new police officers to protect our neighborhoods, 15,000 additional teachers to educate our youth, 330,000 children could receive medical care, and 15,000 homeless individuals could have supportive housing. We are in tremendous need for more funding for key priorities such as public safety, education, healthcare, mass transit, and improved infrastructure, and should not have to forego federal dollars because of an unjust war. Colleagues, we have put in a substitute motion today that we say, therefore be it resolved with the concurrence of the mayor, that by adopting this resolution, the city of Los Angeles hereby includes in its 2007, 2008 federal legislative program the following position. One, on behalf of the citizens of Los Angeles, the city urges the President of the United States to immediately commence a rapid, humane, and complete withdrawal of United States military personnel contracted supporting the military effort and the military bases from Iraq. And, two, the city of Los Angeles urges the United States Congress to appropriate medical, psychological, financial, and educational assistance for veterans. And, three, the city of Los Angeles urges redirection of the financial resources used to prosecute the war in order to address neglected domestic needs, including health, education, mass transit, infrastructure, and homeland security. And the fourth point is, the city of Los Angeles recognizes that the stability of Iraq is crucial to the security of the citizens of Los Angeles and all Americans. We urge the United States government to provide the people of Iraq with non-military material aid to support the security of Iraq citizens and the rebuilding of Iraq. This has been submitted to the city council. We hope the colleagues will all support it, and we thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to open and frame this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, we have about 20 different public speaker cards, and we will move towards public We, we will try to get as many people in as possible, so I'm going to actually ask the, we can't set the clock at this, but we're going to set the clock for, or we're going to give people a minute and a half to speak instead of one minute so we can hear more. But we have 20 cards, so that'll give us about a half hour of public comment. And I will, since the clock doesn't run out at 30 seconds, that will be the equivalent of time up. So I'd like to invite Brian Joseph to be our first speaker, to be followed by Tim Goodrich, and after that, Maricela Guzman. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so, thank you. I want, first, I want to thank Councilmember Rosendahl and your excellent staff for all your great work, particularly Alex Fay. Thank you, guys, for doing this. I'm proud to be part of this resolution that we've been working on for so many months, and now here we are finally on the day to vote on it. I want to, I think Councilmember Rosendahl did a great job of telling us why this really is a local issue. This is, I've heard the question, why should the city council deal with this? Isn't this a federal issue? Well, no, it isn't. It's a local issue. It's affecting and harming the citizens of Los Angeles in exactly some of the ways that you just mentioned. And I think it's our responsibility as your constituents to come here and address you on this, and it's your responsibility to be listening to what your constituents are saying. The polling right now, people in Los Angeles are overwhelmingly opposed to this war. It's more than 70% are against this war. We just heard a discussion in this chamber about infrastructure in Los Angeles. We hear a lot of conversations about where does money come from? Well, we just heard that $485 billion is going, has gone already to this war in Iraq. It's $21.8 billion per month. $277 million per month is coming out of Los Angeles. I would have liked to have asked the question of these three gentlemen who are sitting here, what could you guys do with that money to help our infrastructure?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Tim Goodrich is our next speaker. And then Maricela Guzman, and after that is Laura. And then, Maricela Guzman, and after that is Laura Cambron.
Honorable members of the council, let me start by thanking you for allowing this to come to the floor for a vote today. And let me especially thank those who have already attached their names to this resolution, most notably Councilman Rosendahl, who has led this effort. I speak before you today as someone who has served the country in a time of need. As a veteran of Afghanistan and the pre-war Iraq bombing, I cannot even begin to tell you how betrayed I felt by our government when we were led into Iraq under false pretenses. I do not need to tell you that all politics is local. For every penny spent in Iraq, here at home, there is a need that is left unmet. Since this resolution was first drafted in June, Los Angeles has lost an additional $420 million in tax revenue. The only problem with these numbers is that they do not communicate the entire cost of the war. To realize the true cost, you have to hear their personal stories. On Sunday night, I met a nine-year-old Iraqi girl named Sully. She had a beautiful smile, energy, enthusiasm of a young child, and a personality that brought joy to the entire room. The worst part of the story is not that Sully has to return to a war-torn nation, but rather why she is here in the first place. Sully is in the United States because she is receiving medical treatment after losing both legs due to an errant U.S. bomb. Stories like this abound in Iraq. 90% of casualties in modern warfare are innocent civilians. The VA here in West Los Angeles, one of their patients committed suicide, a young Iraq veteran by the name of Justin Bailey.
Thank you.
It was the lack of leadership that led us into this war in Iraq in the first place. Today, I ask you all to be leaders and have the courage to do what is right for the people of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
I urge you to vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Um, Maricela Guzman? And again, if I can just very respectfully ask folks to watch the clock as closely as possible. Thank you.
Oh, yes. I speak very, oh. Hello, my name is Maricela Guzman, and I would like to, I would like you guys in this room to look at me and see who's speaking today, because I'm actually speaking as a vet, as a woman vet who was sexually assaulted in the service. And I'm not talking about just how this affects me as a woman that was raped, but this affects, and how the war affects me, but it affects me personally, because as a veteran, I have to go to the VA to get my benefits. Unfortunately, I actually claimed, I actually put a claim in, in the VA system. It took them about seven months for them to get back to me. Seven months of my life. It took them, and then they denied my claim, which is normal in the VA. The only reason I actually am able to see a psychologist and a psychiatrist at the VA is because I injured my back during the service, and I am a disabled vet. The issue is, how can you support your veterans who are coming back? I'm actually Mrs. Perry's district, I'm, I live in that district. And the way you support your soldiers is by making sure that they have sufficient help when they come back. And unfortunately, our system is broken. And please, this is the opportunity that you guys have today to fix the infrastructure. We've heard that word so many times. But I'm talking, I'm not talking to you as representing the other vets, I'm talking to you as a vet that is going through this process and have post-traumatic stress disorder. This will affect the rest of my life. And as a woman that's gone through a suicide attempt at the VA, I know, I know what they're going through, so thank you very much for your support, and I hope you support us today.
Thank you. Laura Cambron, Cambron, and David Goldberg, after that, and after that, Jody Evans.
Good morning. My name is Laura Cambron. I live in Highland Park, and my brother is currently serving in Iraq in the Army. And I just really want to express, um, I don't, I really don't see how we cannot pass this resolution. This resolution is saying what we, that we know the truth about the war. This resolution is saying that we care about our communities. You know, it's saying that we no longer, that the longer the war continues, the worse our social condition is going to get. This resolution is saying that we, as a community, have reached a level of consciousness and are exercising our right to demand of our local officials what we feel is best for our communities. And so this resolution is saying that we are also not going to concede any more of our money to fund a false war. And I feel that it's, it's not about politics, it's not about political agendas, it's not about power struggles, it's about truth. And we're trying to get the truth out, because we know that this is a wrong war. And I just want to say as well that we also know that if we get this war to end, we know that our job isn't done. We know that we have to take care of our veterans, we have to take care of my brother, we have to take care of his buddies. And I just want to end with saying that today is my brother's 24th birthday, okay? And it's for lies that he's not here celebrating it with us. Thank you.
David Goldberg is our next speaker. After that, Jody Evans, and after that, Derek Mims. Good morning.
I'm David Goldberg. I'm a teacher and elected officer at United Teachers Los Angeles, and I want to thank you for your efforts to get this motion through so quickly. And yet, we know it's been five years that we've been suffering, that we've all been suffering, as our students have been suffering, as teachers we've been suffering, and the veterans have been suffering. It reminds me, actually, of a joke of a tortoise attacked a snail, and the police came and interviewed the snail, he said, did it get a description? The snail said it happened too quick. So although this process seems quick, the way it's been through here so fast, we know five, five long years, and talking about the amount of money that we've spent for our state, $57.8 billion in this state of California has been spent for this war. We're the fourth-biggest economy in the world. We're dead last in spending on education. With that money, we could have hired over 800,000 teachers, or 860,000 music teachers. You know, we've also witnessed, as a teacher, we passed a motion, United Teachers Los Angeles, five years ago, because we also saw how this war, they were going after our students. But we have racial, we have more military recruiters at some of our schools than we have college counselors. That is unfair to put our students, our students, mostly working-class students, black and brown students, being used as fodder for this war. So I appreciate, even all that being true, it's still hard to take a stand against this war, and I appreciate your efforts to do that today. You're speaking truth to power, and you're providing leadership for us, and I really do want to congratulate you in your stance for what you're about to do today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Jody Evans is our next speaker. After Jody will be Derek Mims, and then Sharon Jimenez.
Um, I'm Jody Evans, one of the co-founders of Code Pink Women for Peace. I founded Code Pink over five years ago. I had been teaching life skills to our troubled youth in South Central, and I saw the cost of the Vietnam War in that community. Every one of those kids that I taught's parent had been in the Vietnam War. We talk about the cost to our city, the bridges that should make us safe, what we could have that make us safe, healthcare for our kids and education, but we don't talk about the hidden costs, the cost of the war coming home, and as Maricela said, what it's like to come home with PTSD. And so the hundreds that are dead and the thousands that are wounded, there are tens of thousands that are coming back to our communities, and they bring that war home with them. And I have seen that happen, and I've seen what it's done to our inner cities, and we need to stand up. We're the city of angels. You need to vote to make this the city of peace and to nurture the city that we have, the youth that we have, and the needs that we have here to make our city safe. Thank you very much for your vote.
Thank you. Derek Mims, Derek Mims, and then Sharon Jimenez, and then Lillian Laskin. Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Eric Garcetti, to Councilmember Rosendahl for introducing this motion into the distinguished council members here in the full chamber. My name is Derek Mims, and I'm here on behalf of Congresswoman Maxine Waters to read a statement for her, from her regarding this issue. Dear council members, when the Iraq war began in March of 2003, President Bush told the country it would be a swift and easy victory over Saddam's regime, and the formation of a stable, democratic state would naturally follow. After nearly five years of broken promises, misdirection on the progress of the war in Iraq, over 3,800 of our brave men and women have perished. Hundreds of billions of dollars have been poured into the war, and over 4 million Iraqi refugees have fled their homes. As elected officials, we have a responsibility to our constituents, but, but there is an obvious disconnect between the policies of the Bush administration and the American citizens he is supposed to represent. As locally-elected officials, those who support the resolution urging an end to combat operations and to return of U.S. troops are sending a powerful message to Washington, D.C. At a time when Los Angeles, like countless cities across the country, faces a tightening budget to confront challenges, local problems, the war in Iraq cost the taxpayers of this city $126.5 million per month. Surely, this money could be better spent elsewhere. Upon passage of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council has joined a clear and growing majority of American citizens and institutions who are opposed to this terrible war in Iraq. It is unacceptable for the president, along with a minority of legislators in Congress, to continue unanimously impose the staggering cost of the Iraq war on American cities and on our children for generations to come. I strongly support the Los Angeles City Council's efforts to pass this resolution, calling for the end of the war in Iraq. Congresswoman Maxine Waters.
Thank you very much. Sharon Jimenez, and following that will be Lillian Laskin, and then we'll go out to Van Nuys, and Donna Perman will be our next speaker after that.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Sharon Jimenez, Senior Advisor for Kucinich for President 2008. Thank you. I'm here this morning on behalf of U.S. Congressman and Democratic Presidential Candidate Dennis Kucinich to support the resolution presented by L.A. City Councilmember Bill Rosendahl to bring our troops home from Iraq. In 2002, Congressman Kucinich led the opposition to the vote to invade Iraq. He was adjoined by 125 of his congressional colleagues. The leadership against the war is the foundation of his 2008 run for the White House. Our campaign has qualified for the 2008 California presidential primary ballot. We will campaign rigorously in our state for an end to the war in Iraq. We are organized and on message with the resolution before you today. Dennis Kucinich commends L.A. City Councilman Bill Rosendahl and the council members who show leadership in presenting the resolution to bring our troops home now and to support our troops by providing appropriate medical, psychological, financial, and educational assistance to veterans, and to support non-military financial aid to rebuild Iraq. There is money already appropriated by the Congress in the pipeline to bring our troops home. You have a chance to make a difference today. You will make L.A. a leader for peace. The world is watching. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lillian Laskin is our next speaker. Then we'll go out to Donna Perman and Miriam Fogler in the Valley after Ms. Laskin. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Lillian Laskin. I have been a public schoolteacher, a mother, I'm now a grandmother. I have been a lifelong activist, currently on the board of the West Side Progressive Democratic Club, which has passed a resolution to end this war. I've been raised in this country, believing in the highest values that have taught him, been taught to me since I'm a child, in truth, justice, equal opportunity, and the rule of law based on the Constitution. I thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of this resolution led by Councilman Bill Rosendahl. I urge all the members of Congress to support this resolution to withdraw U.S. military from Iraq. Our country has been drawn into two deadly wars of aggression and been settling our children and grandchildren with trillions of dollars of debt, and they, we have had our Constitution subverted. We're draining billions of dollars from our cities here at home. We're seeing a foreign policy being conducted for the financial interests of the wealthy few, and all of this violates our Constitution and endangers our national security and mortgages our future. I urge all members of the L.A. City Council to vote in favor of item 19, the resolution to withdraw U.S. military personnel from Iraq.
Thank you. Well, next, go Van Nuys to Donna Perman, and then Miriam Fogler. We have other cards that are in here, we're just doing them in that order here. Donna Perman and Van Nuys.
Okay, this is Donna Perman from Van Nuys. Thank you, Council, Councilman Rosendahl, you're a beautiful man, for coming home with this resolution, because I, what I see in Iraq, it appears to be, these, these veterans are going in there and being sitting ducks. They have no idea what they're supposed to be, what their agenda is, when they're finished, having anything done. They just send over there, and they walk, and they get blown up. And we also have to worry about what's going on with the veterans, because the veterans give the best, and they get themselves totally, and yet, we give very little to them. And, and they just come back, and they get post-stress syndrome, they come back, and they have to kill themselves, or they come back and they're homeless, or they're, um, they, they're unemployed, and they can't be employed because they're mentally ill. And I'm so, this is something that has to be passed, even though it looks like a federal issue. I'm glad that we'd be one more city that says, we need to get out of Iraq. Yes, we need to get out of Iraq, and please pass the resolution.
Thank you. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker, and then we'll have Peter Tatum here, and Rosalia Munoz.
Well, my dad came to the consensus, he's a World War II veteran, he said he wants out, because we should never have gone in there. He said that these people are not the same type of people who want to have freedom, who want to have, have the same things that we have. They, they're always caught in this turmoil of ethnicity, of, of very primitive warfare that goes back to the seventh century, and we've had, like Nick Berg and Daniel Pearl being beheaded. To me, we can't forget them, and we have to know that we have to be defending ourselves and protecting our country here from these monsters, and that we have to stand up and, whatever it takes, be armed and ready, not only to be properly for prevent, prevention, but also to be alert and to be ready. That means to be, have ourselves, have ourselves organized together here as a well-armed militia, the whole people, the people. It says in the Second Amendment, right to bear and keep arms. And we need to get rid of all the, the strict concealed weapons laws, and we need to protect ourselves. The CCW should be given out, like other 37, 38 states, to Californians, to protect ourselves from monsters, so we can get out of Iraq and live, get on with our lives. And my daughter has a stake in this, too, because she's going to...
Thank you. If I can ask you to complain?
Okay, that, um, that, we need to take the steps necessary to protect our lives, and to, that's the means of protecting ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Peter Tatum is our next speaker, and then Rosalia Munoz. And after that will be Martin Rubin. Good morning.
Thanks, Mr. Garcetti. There's a poem by Paul Lawrence Dunbar. It's about African-American slavery. I'd like to recite it for you today. "We wear the mask that grins and lies, it hides our cheeks and shades our eyes. This debt we pay to human guile, with torn and bleeding hearts we smile. Why should the world be overwise in counting all our tears and sighs? Nay, let them only see us while we wear the mask." That poem by Mr. Dunbar captures the sentiments, I think, here in the room today. These people are the people you represent, the people our Congress represents, the people our elected officials represent. 80% of this country is now opposed to the Iraq war. Our congressional representatives are not standing up for us, they're not cutting the funding. 4,000 Americans are dead in Iraq, another 400 in Afghanistan. 28,000 Americans have lost their limbs. Over a million, 1 million Iraqis have died in a senseless, unjust war that has cost this country over 500 million, billion dollars. It's time for Los Angeles, the largest city to date, that will have done something, to pass this resolution, to send a message to our congressional representatives, to tell them to do the right thing, to withdraw our troops, to bring some humanity and integrity back to our system of government and to this country. Thank you.
Rosalia Munoz is our next speaker.
Rosalia Munoz, with Latinos for Peace, resident of the first district. Last week, the National Latino Congress, over 2,000 people participating, voted unanimously on a resolution to get out of Iraq, and for greater participation of Latino and other representatives to get more involved in the peace movement, in things like the October 27th peace demonstrations, we'll have one in Los Angeles. Every third Friday, there is an Iraq Moratorium Day nationwide, that we also would like to see you participating. It makes a difference what a city does in terms of the issues of war and peace. I remember, I grew up in the '60s and '70s and was active, and remember how the city of L.A. and the mayor were pro-war and anti-people on this issue. The LAPD came in '67 at Century City, and then they joined the, the sheriffs in 1970 attacking the Chicano Moratorium, and both, the city council and the mayor, supported those kinds of actions. We changed the mayor in '73, we changed the president, and then ended the war in '74. We need that kind of action again from our city leadership. We need that kind of action again from our city leadership. So we call on you to pass this resolution, but also to be activists in the war. Come out and march with us on October 27th. Every Friday, go to a meeting, third Friday, go to the Iraq Moratorium, and fight for the funds we need and an end to this war.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Martin Rubin. Martin Rubin. And after that is Melrose Larry Green, and after that is Frances Wells.
Good morning, Martin Rubin, West Los Angeles, thank you, Los Angeles City Council, and Councilman Bill Rosendahl and the others for bringing this important motion, as Los Angeles should set an example to begin this process of bringing out the troops for all the reasons that everyone has mentioned. Before I forget, I want to add the cost to the environment of the earth of war, any war. And more and more, we should understand that wars are getting even more harmful to the environment in an exponentially bad way. A government like the United States, a superpower, should not bully and flex its muscles to try to resolve issues, but should work from strength and work for peace. I urge that you pass this motion to set this example, and let, as most Americans, more and more Americans are understanding that it was wrong, we entered this war on misinformation. It was wrong to enter it, and it's wrong, it's even more wrong to stay in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin. Melrose Larry Green is our next speaker, after that will be Frances Wells, and after that Seal Sorenson.
Well, I don't want to use my 90 seconds to protest the way this hearing is going on, but I'll spend 10 seconds. Usually when you have items for and against, you divvy up the time, and you save 15 minutes for those for, and 15 minutes for those against. This is sham, and you have a collection of people for one side and very few on the other side, so I'll use the rest of my 60 seconds to say that I'm against this. I know there's sincere people behind this motion. I applaud the service of the veterans that have spoken here this morning. I come from a military family, I did not go to Canada to avoid the draft, I didn't look for medical deferments during Vietnam. But this sends an awful message to the country, this resolution. I think the city council will be involved in fixing the bridges, the potholes, the traffic, getting rid of the gangs. Nobody wants peace more than veterans. Nobody wants the end to war in Iraq more than this president. I don't care what any of you say, I don't care the way you react, I know this president. I never saw anybody in this city council, except for Smith or Zine, going down to try to get some money from George Bush in the last seven years. I know all about the games you play here. I never heard the word terrorism, I never heard the word 9/11 in this. I don't really know how you could do this, and you don't represent me. And there are plenty of citizens in this city that are not against the war in Iraq, and that want to end it quickly. I do not support this resolution, and I would like at least another minute, sir.
Thank you. Sorry, we have our next speaker is Frances Wells. When we have even cards, we usually do split that up, but we had disproportionate cards in this case, so Frances Wells is our next speaker, and that's been consistent with how we've always done hearings.
My name is Frances Wells, and I'm from San Fernando Valley. We were led into this war by a monstrous lie, and it's time to correct it. I want to thank Councilwoman Rosendahl for bringing this resolution, and I urge all the city members to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seal Sorenson, our next speaker. Seal Sorenson. And then Clay Claiborne will be after that, and then Don Gegen.
My name is Seal Sorenson, and I am a member of the San Fernando Valley Greens, and I'm also, I also serve on the board of the Los Angeles Green Party County Council. I just want to say that I have opposed this war since the war, since before we invaded Iraq originally, and we warned you all, I stood with thousands and thousands, and we warned everyone what would happen if we went into war, that it would open a Pandora's Box of evil, and that's what it has done. And now it is time to get out. Each one of those young men that's dying is not just a number, that's a member of a family, and the Iraqi people have no guilt to be killed also, have their children die in front of them. It's time now to end this ridiculous war. The young men who are dying are not dying for me, they are dying for the greedy, war-mongering corporations. Let's take... Okay, that's part of my minute you're taking, okay. Take the profit out of war, and we will have peace. I thank you for the opportunity to be here.
If I can ask you to conclude, please.
And I didn't have a comment here, you're welcome.
Thank you.
To support our resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sorenson. Clay Claiborne is our next speaker, and I believe it's Gegen afterwards, Don Gegen afterwards, and Michael Lindley after that. Please, go ahead.
I'm Clay Claiborne, I'm with Veterans for Peace Los Angeles. I want to thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for putting forward this resolution. It's very much needed. I wanted to say to Larry Green, if half the people here were in support of the war, I'm sure they would have felt out comment cards, and half the speakers would be in support of the war. But the majority of people, the overwhelming majority of people in this country are opposed to the war, and that's why most of the comments like mine oppose this war. That's the way democracy works. That's the way democracy works. Now, I want to, if people are not familiar with Arlington West, Santa Monica, very much a Los Angeles project, a project of Veterans for Peace Los Angeles, every Sunday morning we put out a cross for every soldier that died in Iraq, every American soldier. We also acknowledge the over a million Iraqis that have died in that war. This is the worst foreign policy disaster this country has ever been involved in, and I'm one that has gone through and protested the Vietnam War, and I say that fully aware of what was involved in that. You're right about the question of bridges. Bridges is an important question for the city council to take up, these local things. But I heard on CNN before I came here today, that we bombed two bridges in Iraq. We did, with B-1 bombers. What's going on?
Thank you. Don Gegen, and then Michael Lindley will be our final speaker after that.
City Council, Bill Rosendahl in particular for bringing this resolution before this council. I'm a member of Veterans for Peace, and as my colleague before me suggested, we have been mustering on the beach for over three years now, trying to bring awareness to the public that there is a very sharp cost to the engagement of troops in a foreign country. We have managed to, among the different people who have fought in different wars, we have managed to integrate ourselves with the soldiers who have come back from the current time. And what the Veterans for Peace have done through the years that we have been opposing the war, we have taken our resources and been the first group on the ground when the Hurricane Katrina devastated the city of Los Angeles. Veterans for Peace were there, the first group on the ground, and are still there to this day. Veterans for Peace have also taken the resources that they have accumulated at the beach, and have taken those resources and reworked the water facilities of several hospitals in Iraq. I'm proud of what we do, I'm proud of Bill Rosendahl for also being aware that the Veterans Hospital, which has been under attack by this administration and others, goes back since Alan Cranston was a senator here. I applaud his leadership along with...
Thank you very much, sir.
...and many of the people who joined his coalition. Thank you.
And Michael Lindley is our final speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. Thank you, Bill Rosendahl. I'm here as a member of Veterans for Peace, and I'm down here to ask you to come on down to our memorial and meet these people who come to our memorial. If you vote for this resolution, you'll see why you voted for this resolution. We meet these people every single weekend, and they come and they talk to us, and these are the young men and women of war, and they tell us about this war, and they're not happy with this war. So I urge you to vote for this resolution, and come down to our memorial, and see what's going on, and you'll feel glad you voted for this memorial. This war is terrible, it should not go on, and I want to say to you, peace. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all the members of the public who took time out today to come down here and to testify on this, and I know meet with us on this issue. We have three members on the queue right now, starting with Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council Presidents. First want to thank you for being here today, and want to thank my colleague, Bill Rosendahl, for his courage, but I also want to say to you, in the League of Cities, there's over 300 cities nationally in this organization. It's a lobbying group that tries to voice the concerns of the cities, and every year, as the Chairman of Economic Development Committee, we hear about the cutbacks that have occurred to our cities as our block grants, by the millions, continues to be cut as we lose services for our education, our childcare, our senior services, our housing. Our deterioration is incredible, it's being felt by cities of all sizes throughout the country. When you look at $2 billion a week to occupy Iraq, and you look at the dropout rate of this city, our high school students in this city is 50% dropout rate, so what options do they have? The options are there when you have recruiters going to every high school and picking them up like low-hanging fruit, as if they meant nothing. And what's sad, you don't see the college recruiters going to the same schools. On March 21st, 2003, Jose Antonio Gutierrez, a Guatemalan immigrant, a green card soldier, was one of the first casualties in this war from the city of Los Angeles. And so we've gotten to the point where it is the war vehicle that becomes an access way for not only citizenry, but for education, for some type of security, and irony here is you have to kill someone to get to a point that we call the American Dream. That is a sad statement of state of affairs here in this country, and I'm glad that we are able to provide this resolution. I hope it's unanimous vote. The message has to be made clear that change is needed if we're going to change the quality of life for all cities, if not in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in absolute support of this resolution today. And I want to thank my councilmember for having the courage, Bill Rosendahl. You've showed a lot of courage around here lately, and I want to thank you. And you have so much credibility on this issue, because you're a veteran of the military, and you have served your country, and you have tremendous credibility on this issue. And I will tell you, in 2003, when we introduced the first resolution, I stood up and spoke on it, I was in support of it, and we were asking them that this government would listen to the city of Los Angeles, and not, and explore all possible diplomatic efforts before they engage in this preemptive strike. And I was proud to support that. And we talked about that resolution in 2003 by saying it would probably cost us between $9 billion and $13 billion a month, and we know now that was right. We talked about how the people of Los Angeles, who rely on federal funds for poverty programs, for gangs, for housing, for infrastructure, would suffer because those federal funds would not be then given to this city for those programs. We were right. We talked about how a preemptive strike by any nation acting alone sets a very dangerous precedent for the international community. We were right. And we talked about how the war in Iraq would take the lives of untold Iraqis, the vast majority of whom would be non-combatants. That is true today. We were right in 2003 by asking this government not to go into this war, and we are right today by asking them to end it. You know, I will admit, I will admit, I'm a peacenik. I grew up in the 60s. I had the poster in my college dorm that said, "War is not healthy for children and other living things." And I will tell you, every Friday night in San Pedro, there is a small group of people, every Friday night, in the rain, in the heat, no matter what, asking for peace, and I honk and wave at them every Friday night, but they have stood there, just in their silence, begging this country to take another look and end this war. The first casualty, one of the first casualties of this war back in March of 2003 was Lance Corporal Jose Gutierrez, the very first casualty of this war from the Southland, from Los Angeles. He lived in Lomita and attended Harbor College, and I went to his funeral. I have since gone to other funerals of those who have lost their lives in this war, who have lived within my city council district. The untold horrors, as someone talked about, the Pandora Box of evil and horrors that has come from this war, from the torture scenarios in Abu Ghraib, to the mothers across this country who have lost their sons, to the Iraqis who have lost those. We were right in saying that war is terrible, it ought to be a last resort, but we have been lied to in this country. We have been deceived, not only for the reasons to go into this war, but we have been deceived in the progress of this war. Last week, we have a sports walk in San Pedro where we enshrine members of the community that have shown courage in sports and other areas. Last year, we enshrined Pat Tillman. We now have an honor called the Pat Tillman Award, which we gave this year to Joseph Anzett from Torrance, who lost his life. But I spent a very, a very difficult moment with Pat Tillman's father last week. As you know, Pat Tillman left a great career in NFL football to join the military because he felt it was the right thing to do. His death was covered up, the facts were kept from his family, from his father, from his brother, they were lied to about the circumstances of his death. His father now does not have a lot of respect for what's going on, and I think it is time, and you are right by saying the overwhelming majority of Americans, certainly the overwhelming members of Los Angeles whom we represent, want us to bring an end to this war. I think this is the right thing for us to do. My assistant, my administrative assistant, Tina Quebec, has a son in the military, and I'm very careful about how I talk about this, because we do want to support those who are in the military. And I'll tell you, our young men and women, and many more women, have done everything this country has asked them to do, everything, and they deserve to be respected. And I'm very careful, I'm very careful about how I talk about this war in front of Tina, because her son is in the military. But I just called her on my phone, I said, "Tina, I'm going to vote for this, because I think it's time to end this war and bring these troops home," and she said, "Good," because I want it to end before they send my son to Iraq.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Zine? Our next speaker is Mr. Zine, then Mr. Labange. Mr. Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I brought tears to your eyes, Janice, because it's very sincere. And I, like many Americans, believe in freedom, in democracy, in the right to vote, in the right to stand up for what is right. And I also look at this war that I believe, living through the Vietnam War, and I was prepared to enter that, like many American youngsters, that was a war that we now look back on and say, was it right? Was it wrong? What were the benefits to this country? If you look at the history of war in this country, it seems every few years we get into a conflict, we get into a war, starts with advisors, and it escalates. And I remember when they caught people in Iraq and said, "Well, now the war's going to end." I think what we see in this particular war is a civil war, not a war of a country against a country, but a civil war, people against people, for whatever their belief. And I, like many of you, don't want to see this country at war, but sadly, we are at war. And I know that the brave soldiers, the brave military personnel, and their families, and what they have to go through every single day, every single night, worrying, is the next report going to be their loved one who's killed, and the ones that are injured, the ones that lose a limb. There was a reporter from one of the network stations who's now back to work, who was involved in a roadside bombing, and I saw the tragic recovery that he went through and what his family had to experience. I don't think any of us are advocates of war, but at the same time, what I look at is freedom and independence. And I think that we need to recognize, for this country to take a stand for freedom and independence, there's a price we pay for region freedom and independence every day. I know Bill Rosenthal, my colleague, is a member of the United States military, very passionate member of the military, and he served his country. He now serves the people of Los Angeles in this city council. Councilmember Greg Smith, his son's in the military at this particular moment. His son's United States Navy. And I'm sure that he fears every single day, along with his family, his son's welfare. I can't support this position today. I'm not saying I support the war. What I'm saying is I cannot support this position. I respect you folks coming down here and advocating to end it today, and I also see the people in other parts of the world and what they're experiencing. I see what's happening in Sudan, Darfur. I see what's happening with the genocide, and it's sad that human beings do this to human beings. I was in Iran, not I was in Iran, I was in Lebanon last year with Council President Garcetti. Ten days after we returned here, the war broke out for 30 days. We missed that war by 10 days. We could have been caught in that war. So I know what it feels like when you come back and you see the place that you were at in conflict. I cannot support this, but I'm an advocate for public safety and for peace. I respect your wishes, and I respect your position, but I cannot support this in good conscience. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Labange is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think what's important in this lesson, and I listened to my colleagues, and I thank all those who have spoken on this issue, but it's important to understand who we are. We're a city. We're the second-largest city in Los Angeles. We're 4 million people. We represent a region. People come to their city hall. They appeal to their local representatives. Just an instant, Paul, how many have ever met with a congressman or been to the Hall of Congress? So there's very active citizenry here. But I would gather to think that not many citizens of Los Angeles have gone to Congress. They may have had appeal. You are very active people. You all get AIDS for being active, which is good. But the concept here is simple. It's what the city says in its federal legislative program. It's what the city says that is to support the veterans and support the care and support the transition. What the city says, it supports an operation of peace. We talked about bridges this morning, and one of my problems that I have with, and I respect government, and I'm a local politician, and I've expressed that to some of you who I've met with, and I'm very local in orientation, but in the discussion about our bridges this morning and the earthquake, and how all this could happen to us, just like that, just like that, the war happened. And see what it did. It crumbled down any bridges, any bridges of diplomacy, and how many people, and Ms. Hahn, when you said people lied to, I think of Colin Powell, when he made his speech at the United Nations, and there will be an interesting history when we all look back at this, when we all look back at this. But it would, it'd be hoped that there could be no more violence in this region. I stand to support this motion because it's a city of Los Angeles, okay? Of its 4 million people that wants to see a change in direction. I absolutely support anyone who commits themselves to serve in the United States Armed Forces, the men and women there, and I hope our message is that we do embrace them. And I hope when they come back, I hope when they come back, we can march down Hollywood Boulevard and salute them for their service in the country, okay? I think that's real important. But at the same time, if this city and other cities say things, it makes a difference. It makes a difference when cities say things. And I believe if it's correct, the Nobel Priest Prize is presented in a city hall, not in a state Capitol, not in a national building, but in a city hall in, forgive me for my geography, Stockholm, Sweden, but I think it's Norway. Oslo, in the Oslo City Hall. Madam Clerk, correct me if I would, please.
The Stockholm City Hall is the beautiful one you're referring to, but the Peace Prize is given out in Oslo.
In where?
In Oslo.
In Oslo City Hall.
Yeah.
Correct. In the city halls. That's the point I'm trying to make, period. It's a city hall. It's not there. So this is a statement. I'm head of Sister Cities for Los Angeles. It's the People the People program, and I will tell you, when I was in Berlin in 1999, the head of NATO walked up to me and said, "Thank you for being involved in this program." He didn't want to see war. He wanted to see people be involved. We were saluting the airlift of '48 and '49 in Berlin, their 50th anniversary. When you talk to people who are really there, they don't want to be there. They don't want to see the violence. So I think we got to redirect it, and it's a message that Mr. Rosenthal crafted for all of us to support, and I hope we all vote aye. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon.
I think back on 9/11, when all of us, I think, were taken to a different place, a place where we were stunned, shocked at the horror of what we saw, even to the extent that many of us knew people who perished on that day. But one of the fundamental principles of American democracy is that the punishment must fit the crime. We have been led astray by a president who is reacting to years past because his father couldn't handle his problems. And he dragged, he dragged the United States into a war that was unnecessary and, I think, immoral. The fact is that history, the fact is that history will show that this is Bush's war. History will show that rather than go after the perpetrators of 9/11, he chose to go after a country and trump up a war on lies and false analysis to cause more damage than even 9/11 itself. The sad truth is that the perpetrators are still free, the primary perpetrator at least, is still free. And this president has no plan to address that. In the meantime, over a million people have perished. And to me, I just don't understand how that is justified. The punishment does not fit the crime. In fact, most of the people who perished didn't commit a crime at all. And so I have no hesitation in standing up, as I did when this proposal first came up by President Bush, to say that he was wrong. I think history now shows that he was wrong, and we will suffer the consequences of that for many generations to come, in terms of the turmoil he has caused, in terms of the lack of respect that other countries will have toward the United States of America. So while we will pass this measure out of this council, I hope that it is more than just a message to this lame duck president, but that it, in fact, is a statement to all Americans, that we must not let a president play a game with our American soldiers' human lives and human lives throughout the world. To those who think it is not appropriate for a city council to stand up, I don't know where most movements begin, if not in local city councils, and this is an important thing, not to mention the tremendous impact that our investment, for example, our pension fund alone, has throughout the world. They listen to Los Angeles. I hope that they listen today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. And Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for your comments, all of your comments, those of you who spoke. And I want to thank my other colleagues who didn't speak, who were listening through this whole discussion, and in respect to the community that's here. It is true, I am a veteran. I served during the Vietnam era. My first year, I was a psychoanalyst in a mental hygiene clinic, and I saw Vietnam vets coming back and dealt with that war in that context. Today, we're seeing veterans coming back from this war in such a troubled state, because many of them have gone back a second time and a third time, because we have no draft, which is an equalizer throughout this nation. So those who are in uniform now are even being enticed with $35,000 bonuses to re-up again, to continue to go to the war. You know, to support our troops means bringing them back home and bringing them back home I say to my Democratic friends in Washington, Nancy Pelosi and others, shame on you for not providing the real strong leadership that we elected you to provide. I thank Dennis Kucinich for showing that leadership and has since the very beginning of the war in Iraq. And so, colleagues, I look forward to your support of this motion. Let's send a strong message to Washington. It's time to get out of that illegal, immoral war now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal. And thank you again to, thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, and thank you again to the members of the public. I just wanted to personally thank also the folks from Echo Park and Silver Lake who met with me and friends from four years ago, who we worked very closely together on that resolution that Ms. Hahn mentioned as well, and we appreciate your support. One thing that unifies this entire room, I know, is the support of our veterans and our troops, and we appreciate your comments today. So with that, it is time for the vote, and Madam Clerk, if you will please open the Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 2 noes.
Mr. Clerk, if we could take item 13 next, out of order. Next item will be item 13.
And that was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. That item will go forth with. Thank you. Our next item is item number 13, called special by Mr. Smith.
President, before you, it's just a technical change or some language changes where the staff report from the Planning Department on the vote of the APC was incorrect in citing elements of the city's policy. Before you, it's just the amendment to clarify those issues. I ask for an aye vote.
No further speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Next item.
Item 25 was called special for cards from the public.
Our first speaker on item 25 will be Tommy Plummer, followed by Mr. Matthew Dowd, followed by Mr. Michael Hunt.
Good morning, counsel, and I hope that the mayor is also listening to this. I want to thank him for his termination of our former general manager of Department of Transportation. First of all, let me say this. My name is Tommy Plummer. I have 38 years with the Department of DOT, and I'm also a neighborhood council rep in Area 2 in Council Parks, CD8. In my 38 years with the city, and I'm representing myself, I'm not talking about the Department of Transportation, the last general manager, which was Gloria Jeff, was probably one of the worst general managers this city has ever seen. I'm a product of, when it was traffic, it was called Department of Traffic. And when you go through Left Turn Pockets, you can look at me and say, hey, he was one of the guys that actually instrumented that. I painted those when we first started them, and we started them on Broadway. So I basically knew all the general managers up, and in fact, I even knew SS Taylor. I was just, just out of the military, and I met him, and that was one of my first jobs, and up until now. But, and race was using this. This has absolutely nothing to do with race. This was a fact that this person just didn't understand what she was doing in the department, and I think the mayor's choice to terminate her was great. The president general manager, I think it was a statement made by one of the council members, said that they terminated one and hired another. Well, let me tell you, Rita Robertson is excellent. She's been in our department before, and the employees of Transportation probably will support her 100%. It's unfortunate, but as Bill Gates once said, everybody's not a manager. She tried, and she didn't make it. But let's be clear here, race was not an issue in this.
Thank you. We will have item 25 continued till tomorrow. Oh, there's one more card. I'd like to step forward, Mr. Green.
I've recovered from that last fiasco. I would like to say that it's the right of the mayor, who I really should be, by the way, to hire and fire. This is not the civil service when you work as the general manager of any department. And from what I've read, Gloria Jeff was awful and deserved to be fired and did a terrible job. And as far as appeals go, you know, appeal all you want. You have city attorneys around here that hopefully went to law school and people on labor backgrounds here that can defend this appeal. I got to tell you, folks, some people can't believe that I voted for Bush and I voted for Vera Gosa. I voted for both of them. I love this mayor. I love this country, but you know what? The mayor has the right to hire and fire, and I know the rules with city council. I read the paper. I know, I know exactly. You can override the mayor. You know what? Gloria Jeff will be fine working someplace else, but traffic's a big problem in LA. I was caught in it last night. I almost moved back to Brooklyn. It was so awful. Took me almost an hour and a half to go two miles. Can we have Genesis not play Friday night as the Hollywood Bowl and Saturday night? You're doing such a good job in our district that Hollywood's out of control. You and Eric, everybody's coming to Hollywood and Hancock Park, it's out of control. But I definitely believe that this city council is too appeal happy. I wouldn't have given a penny to that firefighter with the dog food, but that's your business. I'm a lot more conservative than any of you, and I want to thank Dennis and Greg for being true Republicans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's our last public speaker on that. Mr. Zein, did you want to speak on this? We're going to continue it for...
I just have a question. As former Charter Commissioner, along with Councilmember Hahn, there's a process...
The process stays with us every day for the next 10 meetings, for 10 meetings after the appeal is lodged, and if it's not resolved, it gets continued to the next meeting for 10 meetings.
Well, do we have a hearing here on the matter with the former general manager?
There's the option to do that, but my understanding is there's conversations happening directly with her right now.
Well, see, the concern I have with this, Mr. President, is the charter that was drafted was very clear to hold someone accountable and responsible, that being the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. This charter has been in place for over six years. There's been some general managers that have gone by the wayside, and some have appealed. I find it troubling that the charter gives the mayor authority, accountability, responsibility, and there is an appeal process, which says it comes to this body, we then here, we make a decision one way or another. What troubles me, and I've seen happen, is these, shall we say... What troubles me, and I've seen happen, is these, shall we say, payouts to general managers so they'll go away. I think the payout is you come here and you get appealed, and if you win your appeal, then you are placed back in position. If you lose your appeal, then you professionally find something else to do. But I think it's deceitful when we try to cut a deal when there is a policy in the charter clearly established how you handle general managers that are removed from position by the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. So I'd be opposed to any kind of settlement. I think it undercuts the charter, and I think it does a disservice to the power of the mayor, who this charter designates as the person in charge of the departments. And if a department general manager is not responsive, the mayor has that choice. And if we, as a council, think that the mayor is inappropriate with that, then we can reinstate that individual. That's the policy that I think we need to adhere to. And I know that there's been situations where general managers have received financial compensation, which I think is undercutting the charter, is inappropriate, undercuts the power of the mayor to manage the city of Los Angeles. I want that on the record.
Just as a point of information, Ms. Jeff has exercised her right not to be here right now, so that would be, you know, the option for the general manager to come forward. But in the meantime, she has exercised that right, and she has up to 10 days to exercise the right. So we're in mid-period of that. So it has not been taken away, and it has certainly not been denied. And that will be a right that she may or may not decide to exercise in the next five days.
I also understand she's filed a claim, and the matter's going to go for a claims board, which is not part of the process on a general manager who's been dismissed. And I'm troubled by the claims board would consider some kind of a financial...
I think our city attorney may want to give us advice. The claims board is where there are lawsuits involved, and we probably shouldn't speak about those in public.
That is not before us right now.
Well, I think it is before us if this particular general manager has filed a claim with the claims board on this particular dismissal by the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. It's all part and parcel of the matter that you're...
If I could cut you off there, I respect very much what you're saying, but it's generally our practice not to discuss in open session when we have legal action that has been initiated, if that may be the case. So we can do that, but that would be a new precedent for us to be... We usually have to announce that in open session, but to have those discussions in open session would change the precedent of how we deal with legal cases across the board.
But there is a process, and that process is an open, transparent process here in council with that general manager.
That is correct, and the point is well taken.
And you're saying that that will continue...
Exactly. Each day, this is what we're doing right now, and people have the option to come here and speak on it as well. Ms. Perry, I believe...
And she's decided not to do that.
Correct. Ms. Perry's our next speaker.
Out of respect to the body, I'll take my name off the list to speak for now.
Okay. And this will be continued if there's no other motion until our next meeting, which will be tomorrow. Okay? Next items, please.
Item 26 was called special by Councilmember Hahn, and there are new ordinances that have been circulated.
Okay. We have items... Actually, we should probably take, well, let's take 26 up first. 26 is before us, colleagues. It's called special by Ms. Hahn. I think Mr. Parks, our budget chair, probably... I don't know, this is what I heard.
I pushed your button.
Mr. Parks came over and pressed your button.
I'm sorry, I got confused.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. This is the material that we've been waiting for from last council meeting. We talked about the TUT. I think we've explained it over and over what the impact would be if we lose the $270 million. For those who have labeled it, quote, "an illegal tax," I think it's an error when we figure that our ordinance was based on its own merit, based on our charter responsibility. The fact that we referenced the federal standard was merely for consistency as to the 10 percent. And so we believe that the fact that there's a potential for, in the sense of 218, that that's the declared emergency for us to move forward. It's important for us to realize, as the CAO has done for us, is to lay out all the potential impacts on the budget, whether we look at it by a singular department or we look at multiple departments. You can wipe out a large number of city services. And so for those who've said, well, you just picked the ones that frighten the community, it is important to know that you could lose 3,000 police officers or 3,000 firefighters if you look at that in context. But if you look at the array of departments, you can actually wipe out several departments in the city because there's only a few of them that are basically in an overall budget of over $300 million. The other issue, I think it's important that we clearly identify, that there is a fairness issue if we're going to impose the tax as of city ordinance, that those, that technology that was not in place before the prior ordinance should be part of this package. And so that's where the modernization comes from. I think those are the key points. It's clear that we need the unanimous vote for the finding of the emergency. We need also the vote on the ordinance because we're in a short timeline to get this before the voting public. And so I'd ask that if there's no question, it was very thoroughly discussed at the last time, the CAO certainly put forth a great deal of information when we discussed it last. And now these reports identify for us the material that we discussed, asked questions, clarified, so that we could move forward on. And I think that puts it in context. If there's questions, we certainly have the CAO here and the CLA to respond to those questions. But I think it was thoroughly dealt with at the last council meeting. So I'd ask that move that we approve item 26 and move forward for the upcoming election.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate what Mr. Parks said, and I endorse it wholeheartedly, and I very much appreciate his hard work in seeing to it that we're going to do this. Because, as he pointed out, it is really a very important, necessary thing to do. There's one matter that was just brought to my attention this morning that I'd like to bring to your attention, colleagues, and make a motion on. In terms of dollars, it's a small matter, but in terms of, in terms of the way things look, I think it's actually non-trivial. And that concerns telemarketing. And it is an amazing but true fact that the tax, as it is presently constituted, provides a break if you're a telemarketer in the city of Los Angeles. The tax actually says that, and I guess because telemarketers make a lot of phone calls, right? They're calling everybody in your district and my district and around the country at all hours, day and night, especially while they're eating dinner. And because they're making so many telephone calls, if you register as a telemarketer with the city of Los Angeles, you are taxed at a lower rate than a regular consumer. You're taxed at just 5 percent rather than the 10 percent that everyone else is taxed at. And it seems to me that as we make, as we put this on the ballot and make these changes that Mr. Parks has spoken about, that we should remove the tax break to telemarketers. Because as things stand right now, the city is basically encouraging telemarketers to come do business here. So if you hold my time, Ms. Sisson, could you just take us through the telemarketer tax break?
Actually, I'm going to defer to Mr. Michelson or Ms. Cristovall because I became aware of this issue this morning as well.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers David Michelson with the Office of the City Attorney. Also with me here today is our outside counsel, legal expert Sandy Levin with Coltono Levin Firm. The city's telephone user tax, the existing tax that's presently on the books and that has been on the books since the mid to late '60s, has in it an existing provision that has a lower rate, tax rate of 5 percent, I believe is the number, for telemarketers. Historically, how that sort of special preference ended up in the city law, I am not aware of that. I'm not sure whether anyone around this table would know sort of historically how that came about. But it is part of the existing law, and the ordinance that's before you today maintains the existing law. It certainly is within your discretion to alter that.
And so what I'd like to do, colleagues, is make a motion to remove the tax break for telemarketers. There's a procedure that they can follow and file, follow through and file on to get a tax benefit that no one else in the city can get. I think that is wrong. I don't believe we're talking about a significant amount of money in any event, Ms. Sisson. Am I correct on that?
You know, we're not sure about that, but we're trying to get the answer to that question.
But so my motion, and I have it in writing, I'll provide it to the clerk, would be to delete the third and final sentence of Section 21.1.3a and delete Section 21.1.3f that provides a tax break to telemarketers. Mr. Smith, did you want to...
Yes, I want to second that motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
And Councilmembers David Michelson, again, with the City Attorney's Office. If the motion were to carry, we might have some additional language for you to consider in modifying the ballot title question and in the recitals and the ordinance itself. We'd be happy to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, that'd be, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's been seconded by Mr. Smith. Mr. Zein is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am very troubled that, Karen, this morning, you say you became aware of this issue this morning. I'm very troubled that there's issues, and I compliment Mr. Weiss for finding this out. How many other hidden agendas are there that we don't know about? How many other issues is there unfairness, as Mr. Weiss just pointed out, that we don't know about, that we'll find out next week, next month, next year? We're supposed to have a full, comprehensive report. Before I left on this trip for the city, there was clear direction convinced me of the emergency. Last night at 7:30, my office received through email the information. Mr. Smith and I had a meeting with the mayor this morning, telling us the importance of this particular $270 million issue. Now, today, your own words, became aware of this this morning. My concern is, we're going to the people of Los Angeles saying that this tax, which is in court right now, which may be declared illegal, we don't know, we have something we want to bring forward, lower it from 10 percent to 9 percent, et cetera. But now, at 12:25 on Tuesday morning, Tuesday afternoon, you're saying that you were unaware of what Mr. Weiss just did a motion on that was seconded by Mr. Smith. How many other hidden things are there that haven't been researched so we'll be fair to everyone? And then, looking at the ordinance, I find that exempt low-income senior citizens and disabled households, which is good. I was unaware that was part of it. How many other issues are hidden away where the transparency that we always talk about is being clouded by this particular issue? And I'm saying, as a skeptic, show me the emergency, show me the urgency, show me the necessity. And I understand $270 million is a lot of money, but how is it that now Mr. Weiss finds something, there was a loophole in there, that we now introduce a motion at this late hour on this particular emergency issue? That really seriously troubles me, that we didn't find that out before, and how many others are there that we haven't discovered?
If I could just respond...
Can you please respond to that? Now, I'm not criticizing you, Karen. I know you're in a tough position on this.
This is okay.
I know that $270 million is a lot of money, and you're a very nice lady, and you do a great job. But look at it from my perspective. A week ago, we asked for questions to be answered. We got the issues last night at 7:30. And then now, today, we find new information out about this situation Mr. Weiss mentioned.
If I could just respond, in terms of the ordinance itself, the role that the CAO has played, my office has played, has been to look at the financial impacts of the tax and the loss of the tax revenue. As Mr. Michelson stated, the ordinance as currently drafted merely continued the existing ordinance. The 4 percent, as I understand from Mr. Michelson, was there in the prior ordinance. It has continued in the proposed new ordinance. That is what has always been on the books. And in terms of where we're going forward, I don't think there's been any attempt to not be transparent or to be, you know, forthright about what we're doing. We've talked about, and we have talked about in council last week, it has been talked about in some of our financial status reports, that there is an issue with modernizing this ordinance. It has been under legal siege for almost two years. There has also been a discussion of the fact that part of the problem, the reason for those legal challenges, is that our ordinance was based on a methodology and other things that are somewhat outdated, and that's the attempt to bring this forward and modernize. I don't think, and I will defer maybe to the city attorney or someone else, whether there are, you know, significant revisions to the ordinance that have not been discussed with the council. But, you know, I have to say that until Councilmember Weiss raised this this morning, I was not personally aware of that 4 percent clause. In terms of our financial information, we've been discussing this issue at least for a year in terms of the impacts. You're correct. You asked us when we were last at the table to put those impacts together. And one of the dilemmas we faced, and I faced as the CAO, is how do we tell you what the impact of $271 million is? Because at the end of the day, the mayor and the council would make those decisions. You may decide that you want to eliminate 2,700 police officers, or you may decide that you want to eliminate half of the fire department, or you may decide that you don't want to touch public safety expenditures, and therefore you're going to look at other general-funded departments. And so that is what we basically faced to delimit our report. We tried to consult with, you know, other people in terms of how to present this fairly, did not want to be accused of trying to create a needless panic, and so we tried to take a very balanced approach. We consulted with the CLA on how we should present this information, and it would have been better if it was out earlier. But I think most of the items in our report have been discussed at the table and have been discussed earlier verbally. They just were not in a nice written form that would be easy for the council members to absorb.
So Mr. Weiss or his staff did some research and discovered this telemarketer paying a lower rate. And telemarketers obviously make phone calls and contact and raise money for a variety of operations, organizations, et cetera. They should pay the rate that everyone else should pay. They're a profit-making operation. But it troubles me that we find this out not from the city departments that are responsible, but from a council office. How many other issues are out there that haven't been researched so we have a comprehensive package? So we go to the voters candidly and say, this is what we're going to do. We're going to lower it from 10 to 9. We're going to include the, regardless of technology use, that modernization, modernize the ordinance. I mean, that's the question that we have not really addressed. It's like we're rushing, we're sprinting to the end, and we haven't gathered all the information yet. A Clydesdale's not a sprinter. And we're like Clydesdales trying to sprint. It doesn't work that well. So I need to be convinced, Mr. Smith needs to be convinced, the emergency aspect. And the question is, I don't want to fire 2,700 police officers or any police officers, but I don't want to betray the public and lose the public trust that we worked so hard to obtain. How many other issues are there, Mr. Michelson, Mr. Weiss found, that we haven't explored, that we need to be fair, other than telemarketers? Are there anything else, the disabled and the low-income? I understand that exemption, which I didn't know was part of it until I read this.
And that was also part of the prior ordinance.
And then Ms. Gruel will be the next speaker after this. Go ahead, Nancy.
Councilmembers...
And also, if you could just cite the words of the ordinance...
Mr. Zein, can you just press the button again? We promise we'll come back to you.
Let me...
If you can press your button again, because you have a couple minutes over.
Okay. Ask those questions, please, and then cite the new ordinance, please.
I'm sorry, what was the last part of your question?
And then recite the specific ordinance, the words of the new ordinance.
Okay. Again, David Michelson with the City Attorney's Office. I should start off also by saying that there's been a fairly extensive task force of city staff that's been working on this now for some time, headed up by the CAO, the CLA, Office of Finance, City Attorney's Office, Mayor's Office has played an active role. We've had a host of meetings drilling down through all the issues, and there have been many issues. I know the CAO had issued a detailed report leading up to the meeting last week before your council. Our office issued a detailed report on Friday. We were here a week ago at the table discussing these things with you because we are really doing our best to try to provide as a group, as a task force, all the information necessary for your council to make an informed decision, and for ultimately, if this goes on the ballot in February, for the voters to make an informed decision. Specifically with respect to your question, there are a number of existing exemptions in the existing ordinance. One of them, you've mentioned, low-income seniors, also disabled individuals. There are exemptions for nonprofit hospitals and nonprofit educational institutions. There are exemptions for nonprofit hospitals and nonprofit educational institutions. These are in the existing ordinance, they've been in the ordinance for a long time, the intent is to maintain those exemptions and the treatment for those interests. Telemarketers is an issue that we have talked about, and having had it brought before council today gives you an opportunity to decide whether you want to pull that out of the ordinance and no longer have it as part of city law, specialized sort of treatment for telemarketers at 5% versus the other taxpayers paying the higher rate. It's a fairly straightforward change of the ordinance, if that's what council desires to do. We have a line that would go in the ballot titles, we would recommend, and a line that would go in the recitals, one of the whereas's in the ordinance, and then the two provisions in the ordinance itself. I don't think there's any hidden landmines that are in the ordinance that would come back to cause concern for the council or for the city. Again, this ordinance has been on the books for some time, the existing ordinance, and the new ordinance to be put before the voters will maintain all the existing exemptions and treatment of taxpayers, with potentially the difference being telemarketers.
Ms. Gruel is our next speaker, and then Mr. Labange will be there next after that.
Thank you, Mr. President, and lots of good questions here, and because this has been in the media for the last, I guess, two weeks probably, discussion, that there's a lot of misinformation out there and a lot of challenges, and I've been at cocktail parties where people are arguing about whether this is a legal or illegal tax. Could you, just for the record again, explain to us why we're even here on this issue if it's a tax we've been having for a long time? And hold my time.
Sure, I would be pleased to do so. As we've already mentioned, the city has had on its books for many, many years as part of its user utility tax, a telephone user tax component, which tax telephony under this fairly old ordinance at a rate of 10%.
And when was that ordinance?
It goes back to, I think, 1967. It's been changed a little bit here and there over the years, but you can trace it back, I believe, although it's 1967. So it's antiquated, it's old, it doesn't have modern language in it that we would normally recommend that you have in your ordinance. And the city of L.A. is not the only municipality in California facing this issue, many municipalities are faced with the same issue. The problem that we are confronted with as a city is because there's a reference in our existing ordinance to the federal excise tax. And the reference to the federal excise tax became an issue about a year ago when the IRS issued a ruling where essentially the federal government said that they were no longer going to, that they would only apply the FET to telephony if it's measured on time and distance, I think, is the ruling from the IRS. Is that right, Sandy, essentially? And that ruling threw into doubt potentially municipalities such as the city of L.A. who have also a reference in their TUT to the FET. It's never been the intent of the city of Los Angeles to be beholden to the federal government and to the federal government's FET. So it's still our opinion, as your city attorneys, that your existing TUT, it's been on the books for a long time, despite the fact that it makes reference to the FET, is still a valid law. There are others who disagree, and who have challenged us in court, and who have challenged other municipalities in court.
And the reference to the FET is what? How does that state it in our ordinance?
I'm going to actually turn that over to Sandy Levin, our outside counsel, who can provide a little bit more specificity on that.
Actually, to be completely clear, the reference to the FET was removed by the city council, and it's recently, and it's the removal of that that is being challenged in court. The city's TUT previously said that the tax base only included services that were not exempt from and were subject to the federal excise tax as it existed in 1967. That created some question about what to do with the federal government's reinterpretation of their position on the federal excise tax and their decision to essentially tax only separate charges for local services and not long distance.
Okay. So, if I get this again, because I had a lot of discussions at supermarkets and other places where, again, they have gotten little bits of information on this. So if we did not mention the FET in our 1967 ordinance, and we didn't take it out, I guess would probably, in more accurate ways you've described it, we would continue collecting this as it currently is, correct?
That's correct, with, I think, a large caveat. Large caveat is, we still would be subject to a 1967 ordinance, it's old and antiquated. Modernizing it provides fairness to taxpayers by making clear how the tax is supposed to be applied in sort of an ever-changing technological environment.
And so other cities, and I just want to see comparison, because people look at, other cities in the state who had FET language in there and took it out, or proposed to take it out, have to go to the voters because it's a 218 issue in the state of California, correct?
That is the argument that plaintiffs are making, and so many cities are going to the voters to eliminate this problem.
Just to be safe.
And to be safe.
To be safe.
And to be safe, so that in effect...
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, you're looking at, even without the FET issue, you're looking at a long, slow decline. The FET issue makes it so that we're peering over the edge of a cliff.
And if you lived in another state in the United States that does not have 218, you could make the change and there would be no issue, correct?
And indeed, other states have done just that.
Okay. And so again, I think I want to, when people use the word "it's an illegal tax," I just want to kind of make, get it in the right picture here as to what it is. And I think the modernization in 1967, what we were able to do in charging on time and distance, all those things, is a little bit, we're clearly changing on a daily basis. So some way in which we can modernize, but at the same time, I think the issue's being brought up by many of us in our constituencies is, we want transparency on this issue when it goes to the ballot box, we want to make sure that you're telling us everything, that there are no hidden things in there, and to be able to say to us, this is a real threat potentially for the $270 million, which I know we've listed a number of things of what that equals up to the potential. Because this is not an easy discussion for any of us, no matter who, what area of the city you represent, to have this discussion, but I think it is critically important that all of us, as we talk about it, understand, as you've outlined today, what this is and what it's not. And I think the issues that have been discussed are also about what does modernization mean, and how does that impact people? And the proposal is to go from the 10 to 9%. I have to give the staff a kudos from the budget day, because some of the people I saw after budget day really understood what we were going through here. There was some confusion by one of the individuals who said, "It's going to be a 19% tax if you, you know, you win your lawsuit and you've got now this new law, and is it clear in what you have proposed to us that it is the 9% and no longer if we win our lawsuit, that is, that no longer, it's kind of moot in that way?" We will probably, that's a whole nother issue in executive session with pursuing that lawsuit, but in this instance, could you just explain that as the language that's in this document?
No, I appreciate the opportunity to do that. By going to the voters in February, and if approved by the voters in February, that then becomes the only law in the city of Los Angeles that deals with this issue, taxing telephony, and it will be at 9%. The city's existing law will automatically come right off the books, there's not a double dipping, absolutely not. And then also...
Can you just repeat that one more time?
Certainly. Going to the voters in February, and if and when the voters approve the ballot item in February, the only tax in the city of Los Angeles on telephony will be this new tax at the reduced rate of 9%. The old tax will be off the books, and the city will have also been inoculated in a sense with respect to the ongoing litigation, both directly involving our city and indirectly involving other cities throughout California that will also, though, have an impact on us. So that will take the litigation's dark cloud away.
And I think we have to do, you know, parallel tracks, I've also heard from a lot of my constituencies, what have you done lately to cut your budget, make those, you know, kinds of, and I know we do this every year, but I think I want to continue to have that instruction as part of this moving forward, is to be able to go back to our constituents and to say, "We're going on parallel tracks, we have no idea how this is going, each of these items are going to go, and at the same time, we're going to be fiscally responsible and looking at all the things we potentially might have to cut where we can tighten our belt." I'm sure I might have other questions, but I know I'm over. Thank you, Mr. President.
Look forward to you pressing your button again. Thank you. Mr. Labange is going to pass, and Mr. Alakon is next.
Yes, now, if we lose the case in February and the voters vote for this tax, does it eliminate damages retroactively? Hold my time, please.
No, the adoption of this ordinance does not change the possibility of refund claims, but at this point in time, there's only a possibility of refund claims, and we don't actually have any significant number of refund claims. The lawsuits that we are facing currently are, for the most part, challenging the prospective application.
The what?
The prospective application, the continued collection of the tax.
Oh, really? Interesting. But theoretically, couldn't they go backwards?
Well, there could be an effort for individual taxpayers to seek a refund going backwards, Councilmember, that's correct. They would not, it's our position they are not able to do so in a class action sense, and we've had some victories in court already on that issue.
Okay, so essentially, we have a matter that was created in 1967, long before this council convened or even worked for other city officials, and we're just trying, and it was through no malintent, and this is something that went on throughout the country. And so we are trying to set the record straight relative to Proposition 218 in California to get the taxpayers to agree to pay for this tax. Now, in the provisions of this tax, the concern, I also share Mr. Weiss's concern for two reasons. Number one, whoever inserted that must have had an agenda, but also because it could be a poison pill as we move forward, that in fact, if you present it to the voters, some campaign consultant somewhere is going to read every word of this thing and analyze everything, and if they came up with that, that could be the whole campaign against it, that the telemarketers could get an advantage. Well, that's why I'm also concerned, as Mr. Zine, that there not be other similar problems that could be exploited by a shrewd campaign consultant and create a poison pill. That was, I think, the main concern here. On the issue of declaring an emergency, I would ask my colleagues that, you know, that is, we are faced with an emergency here, and notwithstanding the particular words in the referendum that we're calling for, we have an emergency. And I would ask that we consider that separately from whether or not we agree with the language of the referendum. Quite frankly, I'm not going to be able to go through every single word, and there is a level of trust here, and I do trust my relationships that the referendum will be presented in a way to essentially continue a tax at, I believe it's 9%, and be straight up with the voters. So I have no problem in voting to declare this an emergency, it is an emergency. I will vote to support the referendum on the basis of it being, I consider, based on the trust that I have with the various people who crafted it, to be our best effort to straighten out this mess.
Thank you. Mr. Smith is next.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I thank Mr. Alakon for exploring the "how did we get here" concept, because I think it's an important concept in this whole debate. This issue is not about a new tech, although some elements in it that have that tint to it and are very troubling to me, and Mr. Zine as well, but rather, why are we doing this? Well, we're doing this because we have done this historically for a very, very, very long time, and it's only changes in federal policy and law, and the lawsuit had prompted a change not only affecting the city of L.A., but cities across America, and how they deal with this change that's been going on. I'm very concerned about the concept that in this language, and there's one of those issues Mr. Weiss brought for, a minor issue, but an issue, also in here is the word "new technologies." I am very concerned that that is, in a way, a poison pill, Mr. Alakon, that that is a language that we're going to have to defend, or those that are going to defend this are going to have to defend, because it says that is a new tax on new things. To that, I asked that question, and Mr. Miller had a great answer, and that is, 10 years ago, when you picked up the phone to do something, you got taxed. Now you go to a new technology, you don't get taxed, that's changing the future of America, that's changing the future of city governments and how they receive taxes. It's a great answer. The point is, is that we are now to a point where we have to decide what we're going to do with this, and I don't think, as I said a week ago, I don't think there's been adequate public debate on it, that there's been adequate airing of the whole issue so that there's buy-in before we go to the ballot with this. One thing that is good about this is that today, we are not voting on a tax, we're voting on placing the issue on the ballot. And as I looked at this, and I struggled with this, and I have grave concerns about elements of it, I think the bottom line is that we are telling the voters, "We can't make up our mind on this issue, you have to make up your mind on this issue." That under state law, we must ask you to vote on it, because we're changing a tax policy, that under 218, we must ask you. And to those that say this is an illegal tax, and had a reporter just asked me that question, "Isn't this an illegal tax?" The answer to that is no. This has been a tax that's been legal in America for almost a century, this changed in recent years because of a lawsuit, and it's challenged the current legality of it because of policy changes in the federal government. And so we're not doing anything illegal. In fact, because of 218, we are making it totally legal by going to the voters and saying, "Here's the situation, do you agree we should continue to do that?" And as I struggled with this, and my final comments are, I have grave concerns about new taxes, I have grave concerns about extending taxes, I asked my neighborhood councils a year ago to take a look at the city budget. We gave them a computer, gave them all day and said, "Go change the budget, reduce it wherever you can, make cuts, make slashes," and they came up with a total of $32 million out of a $6.2 billion budget. And they said to me, "I don't know how you guys do it, because we can't figure this out either." That's the bottom line is, we could change our budget, we can tweak it 30, 40 million dollars if we really want to and have to, make drastic cuts without cutting public services, but that's really a very tough thing to do, it's not easy. The bottom line is, our budget is services to the people. It is people giving to the people their time, their energy, to make the city a better place to live. 60% of our budget is tied up in police, fire, and those public services like picking up your trash. And so if we're talking about eliminating huge amounts of budget, that means cuts. These are issues that I don't think this legislative body really even should make the final decision on, and that going to the people is the best choice to go. I have no doubt that my district probably will vote against this, quite frankly, but I want to say to them out there today, "I am not approving this tax, I may not even campaign for it, I may campaign against it," but the voters need to make this decision. This is of a monumental level of decision-making, this is a magnitude far beyond the little things we do here on a daily basis, that really requires the voters to make the final decision, because it is a major, major decision for all of us, not just the 15 of us sitting here today. We were elected to be their voice, but there are some things that they have to be their voice, and I think this is it. And so I will vote for this today to put it on the ballot, and I will wait for some other discussion about some of those elements that Mr. Weiss brought forward, and those other things that we haven't found in this language yet that may come up, but I think those discussions need to take place and will take place over the next few months. And with that, I will vote for this today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to thank my colleagues and the mayor for their hard work on, at the end of the day, all games aside, is a critical issue for the city. Nobody likes taxes unto themselves. What we do like and what we do depend on is services in the city. We depend on parks opening, we depend on young people having a place to go after school, we depend on police answering the call when they get a 911 emergency, and our emergency services from the fire department. We depend on our streets being paved, we depend on our housing being more affordable, we depend on those services that, at the end of the day, are a contract between all of us, that are residents of Los Angeles and our government. We today have the ability to not only preserve services that are critical, but we do it because we have deserved to go to the people about it because of how we have managed the city's money. It never has, I don't think I've seen a single article in six and a half years about our city's bond rating, and yet, to me, it is the most important single piece of news and reflection of what job we have done around this horseshoe, and what this mayor has done, and what his predecessor has done, to ensure that we don't turn into a San Diego, or an Orange County, or a state of California, that we take every penny seriously. Because Wall Street does not get a motion. Because Wall Street does not get emotional about things, they give us a rating that is a fair grade based on what we do. And under this budget chair, we have put handcuffs on ourselves to say we won't just start in an era of term limits programs and say good luck to our successors, that we won't start a new program without a dedicated source of funding, that we will never expand services without knowing exactly how we pay for them, and when we can't, we won't. And we have squeezed more out of this budget and out of this city than I think we have seen in decades, in asking, in difficult times as we did at the beginning of this decade, departments to do more with less, to wait in hiring employees. Sometimes, that made things like openings of libraries or openings of parks have to wait, but we did it because it was the right way to do it. If we were a family, it would have been the proper way to budget and not live beyond our means. Now, today, if we get a secondary benefit of a small reduction in our tax, it's not the main thing that we are doing, but it is something that we are putting forward. It is not a new tax, it is a reduction of an existing tax. And yes, a court case may throw the whole thing out, but nobody in their right mind, looking rationally at what our budget is, can say that's a good thing for the city of Los Angeles to rip a $270 million hole into our budget. What we can do is send a pro-business message of a logical and incremental tax reduction. I think we've done the same thing with our gross receipts tax, where we didn't say abolish the gross receipts tax overnight, we can't do that, but what we did do is each year, reduce that gross receipts tax. And because this is not necessarily a tax that will yield more by reducing it in the way that a pro-business reduction like the gross receipts tax was, we want to keep that at a reasonable level at 9%. I was talking to the Director of Finance, Antoinette Cristobal, about the back and forth that we're having on telemarketing. We can't quantify how much money we get from telemarketers, but I would say it's a pretty unintelligent company that doesn't use a T1 line or voice-over-internet protocol right now that does telemarketing. That's basically, their whole business is on the telephone, and they don't take advantage of the technologies that right now essentially allow them to do it for free. So I don't think we are necessarily talking about much money, if any money at all, that is being taxed right now from telemarketers. That said, we should close that loophole at a future point. Nobody's going to cry for that, it seems reasonable for our telemarketers, and they do good things as well as very annoying things that we all experience at home. But that's probably better put off for another day. Today, let's keep our eye on the ball, the services that people depend on us to do the right thing here, not to play politics with them, but to make sure that we modernize a tax. If not this one, we have to look people straight in the eye and say, then where else does it come from? And this is something that people have been paying, they will see a slight reduction of it, and we can continue those critical services, that really is what this horseshoe is all about.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Madam President. Everybody has said this statement, the bottom line is, is the press keep calling me, well, is it an emergency? Well, it will be an emergency if we don't have this to do our basic services. We've got a whole list of attachments of what will have to be cut back. You know, we need the stability in our budget, it is a reduction at one point, it is not a new tax, and I do expect unanimous support from our colleagues in getting this on the ballot. And then we have the job of educating the public. Instead of listening to this Howard Jarvis nothingness that always comes out of the woodwork, no taxes, no tax, great, 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 but how are you going to run your city? So we have to stand up and we have to explain to the people what the money is for, and how it is spent, and how our budget is derived at. And as we go through the budget process again this spring, and I have the fortunate pleasure of being on the Budget Committee, I'm learning every day more stuff, we need to go through every line item once again and see what we can cut back on, what we need to do, and where we need to go as a city. But I appreciate the mayor providing this leadership at this very moment. I have been asking for this to go on the ballot for months, and too bad it's a last-minute thing again in an emergency mode, but the bottom line is, it's got to go on the ballot, and thank you for providing that leadership. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. We just went through a discussion about the impacts of this war, and when you look at how much we need to share in terms of information with the voting public, this is going to be one of those tools and opportunities to go to that place which we describe how much the city is actually losing. Now, without this opportunity to offer the public, the voting public in Los Angeles, to take a stand, it essentially is going to force us to continue our cutting measures that I believe continues to be felt disproportionately throughout the city, because of the imbalance that exists with lack of services in areas that are very crowded, areas that have older infrastructure, and areas that need emergency relief, and that will deteriorate with time. So I just want to thank the mayor, thank my colleagues, thank Councilmember Smith and Zine, I hope, that we could at least put ourselves in a place where we could inform and educate the voting public on why we have to do this, and drill down to those issues that speak to why those libraries are shut down, why that childcare center has to be closed, why we no longer could feed our seniors through our programs and our senior services because it's directly aligned to our actions today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Parks.
Well, the emergency is approaching. When I look at the comment "modernize the ordinance," could the modernization open up to eliminate some of the exemptions? Now, there's some exemptions that have been brought to my attention on the existing ordinance, such as news media. News media is exempt. I don't know if the general public is aware of that, but there are nine exemptions that currently exist in the current ordinance. News media, or news services, international, et cetera, organizations, servicemen in combat zones, I think everyone would support that, items otherwise taxed, common carriers and communications companies, installation charges, nonprofit hospitals, state and local governments, nonprofit educational organizations, and then they've got the other exemptions, or the other exemption that Mr. Weiss illustrated further down in the ordinance. The modernization, the news media, for example, news bureaus versus radio broadcasting for entertainment. Is radio broadcast for entertainment exempt? Is the television news exempt from the broadcast for entertainment? We talk about the modernization and the exemptions, clearly someone lobbied for those exemptions many years ago. And if we're looking at modernization of this, that's a very broad term, the modernization being interpreted by different people different ways. If we have a specific exemption, as you state, the elderly and the disabled, combat veterans or combat military personnel, but what about those other exemptions? Now, I would question, radio stations mostly, most of the radio stations don't have a news bureau anymore. They subscribe to a new service. Would they still be exempt, or would that exemption be eliminated?
Councilmember, are you looking at the first-listed exemption under news services?
Yes. I think that's number one.
That is number one, sir, that's correct.
No tax shall be imposed upon this section except for respect to local telephone service or any payment received from any person or service used in collection of news for public press. Now, not every radio station
Correct.
has a news bureau. There are some here, KF3B, KNX, KFI, among the others, the FM stations, they don't have a news bureau, they don't have any news. It's entertainment, which is, not to say negative, would that then modify their telephone tax? When they do a live remote broadcast from a different location, would that then modify that? Because many radio stations do live remotes for entertainment purposes. And if we're not collecting tax on this now, will this modernization modify that? Because years ago, every radio station had news that would come on at certain intervals. We've seen that go away. Public service announcements used to be part of the media, very seldom do you hear public service announcements anymore. That's all changing, that whole philosophy changing. Now, there are large corporations that own all these media outlets, they're no longer independent. What about that aspect of it?
Councilmember, because this exemption has been in place for a number of years and is in place as we speak here today, and the Office of Finance, who has familiarity with the sort of workings of these exemptions, might be able to provide some information as to how they treat radio stations now with respect to this particular issue. I don't know whether we've got someone from the Office of Finance who can answer that.
It specifically says news, and a radio station broadcasting entertainment, whatever the radio station's entertainment format is, and they don't have a news segment. When I'm looking at that, under the modernization, well, we have an exemption under the current ordinance with the new focus under the modernization, then say, okay, radio station, you don't have a news bureau anymore, you don't have a news service, you don't report the news other than a major disaster that may strike. I'm looking at this term "modernization," which is a very broad term, many different interpretations, many different ways. Clearly, a news station that covers news, it's not a question, but the others, and there's a number of stations in this region that we know are owned by major corporations, would they then still have this exemption, or would they then start paying the tax like everyone else under this new 9% procedure?
Well, because the exact language in this exemption is not being changed, it's the language that's been here in the city's law for quite a few years, and it's not being altered, how it's historically been treated will be this, an indicator of how it's going to be treated in the future. So Office of Finance maybe can shed some light in terms of how they have utilized this various provision. If you've got a radio station that's disseminating news in some capacity, it's quite likely the Office of Finance has been utilizing this exemption for that radio station.
But there are certain radio stations that don't have any news coverage whatsoever. Are they paying a phone tax, or are they currently exempt? And then the definition of the new ordinance, when it says "modernization," now that station's format has changed, modernization syndicated broadcasts, whether it be Bill O'Reilly or some of these other individuals who syndicate nationally, what about that exemption that currently exists? Would that then be modified under this new modernization, which is part of this new ordinance?
The modernization to which you refer does not reach to these exemptions.
Okay, then I want to address those exemptions that specifically cite those particular nine entities.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Before we go further, at least...
Mr. President, and I hate to be pushed on this, and I'll tell you why. When we get information delivered at 7:30 at night, and the mayor said, whatever time it needs to digest and absorb, I feel it's appropriate to do that. Now, I'm the lone holdout on this, there's no question about that, for a variety of legitimate reasons, because I don't want to spend tax money that we shouldn't have to spend, I don't want to tax people that I don't think should be taxed. So I haven't been convinced, and you can push this and I can say no, and it'll be the case. Or we can hold off and answer the questions, or do whatever until I'm satisfied. I don't want to be a holdout on it, but at the same time, I'm not satisfied. And every time I turn another page, I find more information that I'm not getting, say, getting answers to in a long process here at 1:00 in the afternoon. And again, we got the documents last night at 7:30, so I don't think I'm rushing it, I'm trying to digest it so I can tell my constituents and explain if I change my decision, why I change my decision, or if I don't change my decision, why I don't change my decision on these arenas that we're questioning. So I request your indulgence, Mr. President.
Councilmember Zine, if I can put this in context, basically, the instruction that the Telephone Users Task Force was working on was to modernize the ordinance, but to leave the ordinance in as much of the same form as possible as the existing ordinance. There was a concern that we try to continue what was already on the books that has been on the books since 1967, and therefore, these exemptions were carried over as they have been. Now, that said, there was also a concern about equity. This is the issue that Councilmember Smith spoke very eloquently about, that Mr. Miller had an example earlier today, about anyone who makes a phone call should be treated the same, whether that phone call is over a landline, whether it's a voice-over-internet protocol, but that they're treated equitably. And so the main efforts towards modernization, and Ms. Cristobal's here, I'm here, Mr. Michelson's here, we're happy to answer your questions, but the main effort towards modernization was not so much to look at every element of the ordinance as it was to make sure there was equity in terms of the types of technology being used. And so the focus was on modernization of being inclusive as to the technology, was not necessarily to looking and analyzing every single exemption that was in the ordinance, and I don't think that was really our understanding. And so the focus was on, let's make sure that we're equitable in how this tax is applied moving forward, and no one is disadvantaged or advantaged because they have access to a particular technology that others don't. That said, we're happy to answer your questions as it relates to the specific exemptions.
Well, if we look at the telemarketers, there was an exemption, and there was now a motion about a half hour ago to eliminate that. And what I'm asking, under this modernization and under this discussion on this new ordinance, why aren't we looking at these other exemptions that may no longer apply? If a radio station is not involved in news business, why would they be exempt?
I think it's at the discretion of the council to do that. Councilmember Weiss thought it was appropriate to bring this up, and it's at the discretion of the council if you'd like us to look at other exemptions now.
Well, I'm looking at the exemptions to say if we're going to write an ordinance and keep them in there versus analyze them all and decide which ones are appropriate, which ones aren't appropriate, and do it in a full package, and not an ordinance that takes effect and then we modify that ordinance. I mean, clearly, we've already had one issue on telemarketers that wasn't here this morning. It came in this afternoon. So there's other exemptions that are illustrated in the current ordinance that maybe we want to examine to say we modify, either to eliminate or to bring them into compliance with the 9%. And I'm not trying to pick on the news, but clearly, the news business isn't what it used to be on radio stations. And that's, I highlight that since that's the number one category, cited as the first example under exemptions, nonprofit hospitals, et cetera, are other exemptions. There's a total of nine exemptions. We're not receiving revenue from those exemptions specifically exempt.
Councilmember Zine, you are correct, we are not receiving any telephone tax revenue from these particular entities that are identified in the ordinance. They have always been exempt, and what we, we didn't spend the time looking at them in great detail, we felt it was appropriate just to bring those over and continue to exempt them. The concern here really is that the $270 million, and the taxes associated with these entities that are exempt are not part of that, so we were really concerned about protecting the $270 million.
We're also talking about equity.
Yes, we are.
And if we say news services, and a station is no longer involved in any type of news service, why would they still have the exemption? Which would be additional revenues for the city of Los Angeles to help that $271 million deficit?
We didn't look at the exemptions, we carried them over that were currently exempt under the existing...
I understand that. But Mr. Weiss brought up a motion that was seconded regarding telemarketers. That wasn't looked at either. And apparently, we feel that's appropriate to include them in the 9% for equality for all. I'm looking at these other exemptions and saying, are they appropriate that they be exempt? They weren't looked at, they weren't examined. And if we're looking at this, we should look at this as a whole package. And I think we're looking at this at the 11th hour to say, actually, at the 110 hour, to try and put something together under this emergency. And I'm not questioning the fact that $270 million or $270 million is a lot of money to lose, I'm not questioning that. I'm just looking at this whole package that, once we approve this in council, then it has to be sold to the voters, and there'll be the opposition. How do you overcome that opposition without being candid and forthright in the discussion here in council? Because we're going to be asked the questions, we're going to be asked to give answers, and if we don't have them, and they're not coming from staff, then I don't know where they're going to come from, other than say, well, we need to do this because the city's going to fall apart if we don't have it in the budget. So, can you respond to that?
Yeah, I think, again, I think it's important for us to look at what was asked and what was delivered.
What was asked?
And what was asked was to look at an ordinance, to come back with an ordinance that could be put on the ballot if voted on by the council members. The Telephone Users Tax Force with, obviously, the assistance of the city attorney, came back with an ordinance making an assumption, which may have been erroneous at the time, but the assumption was that the ordinance should look as much like the prior ordinance as possible, but to modernize the technology piece in terms of equitable distribution on technology. So it is correct, these exemptions were not looked at. I don't think anyone at this table is taking a position on the telemarketing issue. That's a motion that's been introduced by Councilmember Weiss, the council will have an opportunity to vote on that. The position of the task force that brought the ordinance forward was to basically keep the existing ordinance, the 1967 ordinance with its minor modifications, in place with the exception of modernizing technology. And that was... And that was discussed in our report, which was released about a week ago. The city attorney had a draft ordinance attached to their report, which was released on Friday, and then our supplemental information, as you have pointed out, did not come until last night at 7:30 in terms of financial impacts. But the instruction basically to the task force was, come forward with the ordinance. This is the ordinance that we did come forward with, the city attorney has drafted, and our judgment was, we did not make any changes to any of the exemptions, it was only to the technology to which the tax would be applied. So it was really focused on technology.
I think it should have been broader. I think it should have been broader, for the fairness doctrine, for the equality doctrine, to say we want to be fair to all businesses, not pick on telemarketers, or pick on news, or pick on any specific enterprise, but to include them all. And if it's revenue they should be paying, they should be paying, 9%, 10%, whatever their percentage across the board. The reason I ask about the news services is because all of us listen to the radio stations, and we know that most of them don't have any news bureaus anymore, they don't have any news reports, they didn't, entertainment, that's the way it is. If they're exempt, then they shouldn't be exempt. That's what I'm asking about, the definition of that, when we talk about this definition "new" of modernization and the broader focus.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
And I still don't have the answer.
Okay, would you please press a button one more time, we're about 10 minutes over.
Does this have to be done today, or could this be continued to tomorrow?
The declaration we need to do today.
It can't be done tomorrow.
The declaration we need to do today.
What happens if it was tomorrow?
Mr. Parks' time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me ask, Mr. Michelson, let me just ask, could you give us the legal rationale, because what I understood about the ordinance is that we felt the ordinance was independent city ordinance, we only made a reference to the federal ordinance, or federal law, for the consistency. Could you give us the rationale and the logic of why it is important to have stayed fairly similar to the existing ordinance as we move forward?
You're correct, Councilmember, that back in the '60s, back in the '60s, many municipalities around the country, not just California, it included a reference to the federal excise tax, the FET, in their user utility taxes, in their local taxation ordinances, because the federal government, in essence, would provide exemptions that would then be uniformly applied throughout the country. So it made sense from a practical standpoint. And that worked for a number of decades, up until again last year, that the IRS issued their ruling, which changed the dynamic for municipalities around the country who had made reference in their own local taxing ordinances to the FET. Again, we all believe quite strongly that the existing city user utility tax is still lawful despite what the federal government has done. We are not beholden to what the federal government has done. Others disagree, and that's why we're in court. I think the charge to the city staff, the CLA, CAO, Office of Finance, the city attorney's office, was to, and it's been stated here a few times, and I think Karen Sisson, your CAO stated it quite well, was to modernize this ordinance, to make sure that after decades of not modernizing it, we're picking up, we're including appropriate language in terms of the types of telephony that's supposed to be taxed, and doing so in an equitable and fair way. And as also mentioned earlier in today's meeting, earlier this year, the city council amended the tax to remove the reference to FET, this is now the sort of next logical step to go, to further protect the city's tax base. But the charge to city staff was to do this modernization, to make sure that the language in the tax to go on the ballot in February, if that's the decision of council here today, accounts for the types of technology that's out there, that people use when you use the word telephony. It's no longer just picking up a phone that's hanging from your wall in your kitchen. What we were not necessarily charged to do was to take a look at the existing exemptions that have been on the books for many years. And those exemptions have been historically treated in a certain way, and they'll continue to be historically treated, continue to in the future, to be treated in a fashion similar to how they've historically been treated. The city council, from a policy standpoint, can take a look at some of those exemptions, and if it's so inclined, make modifications, including on the issue of telemarketing, if that's the desire from a policy standpoint of the city council. But again, the goal was to try to keep the ordinance, the nuts and bolts of it, the architecture of it similar, while modernizing it to make sure that the newer technologies, for fairness and equity's sake, are baked into what would go to the voters in February.
Was there also a charge that was sent forth to reduce any incidence of people getting an increase in taxes? Was that part of the charge, is that we were to be sensitive in writing the ordinance and modernizing it, that the city residents would not experience an increase?
No question, that is absolutely correct, and indeed, the ordinance reflects a reduction from 10% to 9%.
So if we altered the exemptions, there'd be small groups of people throughout the city that would be getting an increase?
For purposes of telemarketers--
I mean, but even these exemptions that were--
Oh, correct, yes, absolutely. If you alter, if the city council alters the exemption, that will change what they're--
So it wasn't that you ignored the exemptions, it was that you were asked not to raise taxes as a part of your charge?
That's correct, Councilmember.
All right, the other thing, and let me ask Ms. Cristobal, in looking at these exemptions, if you go through them, are there any other, in a sense of business tax reform, where we made judgments about certain businesses getting some form of a tax break? Do we use a similar logic as to how we went through that process to be sure that certain businesses were treated differently than others? Just as these exemptions are set up in this ordinance?
Well, these exemptions have been in place for many, many years, probably 10-plus years, so they have been in existence since that time. But relative to business tax exemptions, we do look at businesses that, such as the case, like small businesses, we felt that, you know, they should get a tax break--
In fact, we even made a decision that every business that makes less than $100,000 doesn't need to pay taxes.
That's correct.
All right, so the issue of fairness, of everybody paying identical taxes, we pretty well got rid of that with business tax reform.
Yeah, that was addressed--
Okay, and then tell us some other businesses that we altered how they pay their taxes.
We have the small business exemption, as I indicated, and that's businesses whose gross receipts are under $100,000, they do not pay a tax, provided they foul time. We have new businesses that relocate into the City of Los Angeles, they get a two-year exemption for their business taxes, provided that their grocery receipts are under $500,000.
Who am I telling--
We also have exemptions for the entertainment industry, creative artists, motion picture production companies and the like. And also, as stated here, you have the low-income senior citizens, disabled and blind exemptions.
And those are, we commonly refer to as lifeline, like for Department of Water and Power and--
Right.
So we've made a distinction through the city on a variety of ways where people pay different taxes because of the attraction, or what we're concerned about bringing business, or eliminating businesses, and so these exemptions are no different than what we've done historically?
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, so it's not new exemptions, these have been in place over 10 years, and more recently, we've approved other exemptions for business tax?
That's correct.
Okay, and then the other issue that we are dealing with is that we've never set a philosophy, and you collect all those taxes, that everybody's being treated identically. That's not been part of our city philosophy for decades.
Right, we want to make sure that everyone pays their fair share, but in the case of small businesses, we have made an effort to attract and retain them with the expectation that they will grow, and their business in the City of L.A.
And that's the reason that we made the rule about under $100,000?
That's correct.
To allow businesses to continue to grow?
Right.
All right, so it would have been unfair, in our judgment, for them to be paying at the same rate of, say, a business that was making several million dollars?
That was, that's the case, yes.
All right, and then on, as we heard earlier, on the telemarketing, what do they represent in gross taxes to the city?
The telemarketers, in terms of, in total, the taxes that they pay annually is under $300,000.
And so taxes, but what about the--
Business tax, I'm sorry. I don't have the information on the telephone utilities taxes.
All right, and I'd just like you to just make a comment on the report that Miss Sisson put together for us on October 16th, that we constantly hear about, no one likes taxes, nobody wants to raise taxes, but I think the reality is, is that's the only reason we have a city that we can provide the services. And if the chart is correct, on the general fund unrestricted, $3.6 billion. The kind of categories are property tax, users, utility users' tax, business tax, sales tax, power and water transfer, documentary transfer tax, transit occupancy tax, parking fines, parking user tax. Those are the kinds of things that we use in order to hire police officers, pay streets, trim trees, those are the sources that we use for those kinds of services. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
But as a CEO, is there any other revenue that we get that are not fees, fines, or taxes? I mean, do we have any endowments that people give us?
No, we do not. We do occasionally receive grant monies--
Grant monies, but those generally are directed for a specific purpose?
That's correct.
Okay, those are kind of restricted--
And they come from other taxes that are paid to the state and federal governments.
And after this question, if I can ask you to press a button again--
And then the other things that we have for services, for full recovery, is we have things like licenses, permits, fines, grants, but again, those are directed very restricted in how they can be used.
That's correct.
So if we didn't have those funds coming in, how would we run the City of Los Angeles?
Well, the answer is, we would have to do less.
I mean, we would not exist if it were not for these bulk of funds.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. With your help, Mr. President, in an effort to triangulate between Mr. Parks and Mr. Zine, try that sometime, I'd like to defer to Mr. Zine, who is going to, I believe, wrap into a motion, the discussion we've had about telemarketing here, so I'll withdraw that motion, and some other stylings of his own. I give you Dennis Zine.
So that will be folded into Mr. Zine's motion. Mr. Zine?
Mr. Weiss, instruct the CAO and the CLA, Karen, get your pen ready, to work through the TUT task force to present recommendations on correcting inconsistencies and loopholes I have presented in a second package, including all of the issues on the exemptions, telemarketers, news bureaus, et cetera. And that way, we will address all those. I also heard creative artists was also, all those issues, all those categories, the exemptions that were mentioned, the nine exemptions, and any other exemptions that were mentioned on the TUT tax--
And to clarify, that would be for a future time?
Yes.
For a future time.
For a future time to present and to answer those issues. And then the other question I have, and Mr. Parks touched on this, we have a $6.82 billion budget. Now, you look at $270 million out of $6.82 billion, and people say you should be able to find the revenues out of that $6.82 billion. But in reality, what you're stating is that we have a $3.5 billion budget that we have to discover this $270 million from. That's what, the pot that we can pick from? Not the 6.82, but the 3.5? Ms. Michelson, you going to say something? Or forever hold your peace? No, you were reaching for that microphone.
Once you're finished, sir, I'll mention something.
Well, no, that's my question, is that people will say, you have an emergency, you have a $6.82 billion budget, you can't find $270 million out of $6.82 billion, but in reality, we're talking a $3.5 billion budget, not a $6.82 billion budget.
That's correct.
Which is obviously more difficult to find $270 million out of a lower amount of billions of dollars. Can you respond to that?
That's correct, Councilmember. Yes, that's correct, because the other monies are restricted, special funds are very specific in their purpose, and we do have some revenues that come into the general fund that are restricted as well. And so when you look at taking that $271 million cut, you've got to take it on the unrestricted portion of the general fund, which is, you know, between 3.5 and $3.6 billion.
And that's what we talk about, the police and the fire and those other emergency personnel that provide safety to the people of Los Angeles.
That's correct.
So that, in essence, is the emergency out of the $3.5 billion to $271 million loss.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. We'll take our public comment cards on this now. I had some folks that are very patient out in Van Nuys, signed with Donna Perman, and then Miriam Fogler, and then Michael Montague. Ms. Perman, good afternoon.
Great, I didn't think we were going to get to us. Okay, I'm totally against this telephone tax. Councilwoman Weiss, Parks, and Alarcon, you feel this is a tax needed? You pay for it. I'm for, Councilwoman Zine, there is too many hidden agendas, too many questions. I don't feel this is ready for a vote, and I think that Zine, Councilwoman Zine was correct that it should go for another day. How can anyone talk about cutting police and firefighters as a possibility? And they said that it could be done, it needs, we need more. And it looks like, and then they said it's not a tax, but if it looks like a tax and smells like a tax, it seems like this is a tax. So we don't need, we don't need this tax, and I think the city council should do it. I don't think the city council needs to raise every year. So let's slash the politicians' perks and raises, and then they can pay up for the shortfall. And now I'd like to let Miriam Fogler speak.
Ms. Fogler? Good afternoon.
Yes, you made people sit here a long time, and this is not, this is not good, what you're doing, it's not fair. I don't know why, it's inhuman insanity to pass a tax against yourself, except you're, of course, you're making $171, $648 a year, you can afford it, after all, poor city workers, if they're lucky, get $150 a month. And, you know, this guy came from Paramo City Neighbor Council, he doesn't realize that this tax, if they, of course, they're threatening the whole city neighbor councils, somebody told me, that they're not going to get their money if they don't pass this tax. And this is, to me, is like the Boston Tea Party thing. And what you're doing, you pass your royalties to yourselves, and you give the city workers a plus if they get a good, if the city's a plus, they'll get their raises. If you're the minus, the city workers get nothing, and meanwhile, DWP gets some more of their raises, and you get your raises, never mind the worker, city workers, they need to take their, take back the city here, and put you people back on the city tax rules, that you should, your salary should be accountable. I don't even have the time here, how long I've been here, that's not fair, I don't know how long my time has been here, it's not working. But your salaries should be accountable by the voters, and the City of Los Angeles should be repealed, and the CRA money should be put back into the city revenue, the general fund, that they have been taking from the city since 1949. All that revenue the CRA has, they got millions of dollars, 270-plus, that you could take from them to make this shortfall, instead of taxing us. There's no way. People need this, phones, cell phones, this is a First Amendment right, you're violating our rights, and you have no right to pass this, it's against the law what you're doing. And I hope to God that some people will do something about it, because I know people who couldn't do anything about Weiss, that could do something about the people who wanted to pass this tax on to us, why don't you pass on yourselves?
Thank you. And just to clarify for the record, we're not passing a tax, we are putting on the ballot for the people to decide on a tax that exists right now, not anyone. Mr. Michelson, we have other speaker cards, did you want to chime in before those? Sorry, okay. Michael Montague, excuse me for mispronouncing, in Van Nuys. Is he still there?
He was touching some things back there, and they escorted him out, I'm hoping he'll come back.
Okay.
Help him behave next time.
Thank you.
He was very impatient.
We'll go to Arnold Sachs then, as our next speaker, here in council chambers. Mr. Sachs.
Good afternoon, thank you very much, Arnold Sachs. Just listening to part of this conversation, because I got here late, what it seems to show to me is that for all too long, a period of time, the city council has in fact sat around and done nothing to address some of these exemptions that they're now addressing on this emergency moment. If these things had progressed over a reasonable period of time, and some of these exemptions had been addressed at an appropriate time, then the city would have had additional revenues to spend to feed the homeless and house the poor, and the senior citizen program would have had better lunches and better transportation. But now that there is an emergency, now you're finally-- But now that there is an emergency, now you're finally waking up to the point, well, you know what, maybe we ought to look at some of these things that haven't been taxed before and try and drain every penny out of it that we can. The problem is on your shoulders, city council, whether you passed the motion to include the tax on the February ballot or not, this is just another runaround, just like it was when you had the initiative for term extensions and, what's the word I'm thinking of? I'm sorry, having a brain cramp. Having ethics on the same ballot. This is an ethical question right here. Why weren't these exemptions answered, talked about prior to the emergency situation you're in now? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. That will close the public comment. We have Mr. Zine's motion, it's been accepted without objection as a friendly amendment. And is that all right, Mr. Zine? We sit with that?
That will clear up all the confusion.
Yes.
Answer all those unresolved questions on the exemptions.
Correct. And would you like that back in a set number of days?
Whatever the will of the council.
Can we have a preliminary list of some, at least of the inconsistencies? And inconsistencies, just to be clear for the record, some of them may have been policy initiatives, not just negatives, they may have been the legacy of actual directed policy differences, probably most of them are. But can we have an initial list back in 30 days? Is that reasonable for the TUT task force? And I know you wanted to say something else, Mr. Michelson, too.
Thank you, Council President David Michelson, the city attorney's office. In order to carry forth Councilmember Zine's motion, and to preserve the option for this council at a later date to revisit the exemption or special preferences, we would strongly recommend some additional language be added into the section of the proposed ordinance, 21.1.13, with a heading of amendment or repeal. And our additional language would give you that opportunity at a later date. Would you like me to read that into the record?
Sure, please, why don't you do that?
It's a short paragraph, but I'll read it, and then I'll tell you where the insert would be. It's presently written as follows. This communications users tax imposed by this article may be decreased, repealed, or amended by the city council, but may not be increased without a vote of the people as required in California Constitution, Article 13(c), and California Government Code, Section 53750, Subparagraph little h. The addition we would recommend would come between the words increased and without. And I'll read to you what the addition would be, then I'm going to go back and read what the new paragraph would be. The addition is, other than to eliminate or modify the exemptions and special provisions contained in Section 21.1.3, excuse me, special preferences contained in Section 21.1.3. So the section would now read, this communications user tax imposed by this article may be decreased, repealed, or amended by the city council, but may not be increased other than to eliminate or modify the exemptions and special preferences contained in Section 21.1.3, without a vote of the people as required in California Constitution, Article 13(c), and California Government Code, Section 53750, Subparagraph little h. We'd recommend that addition.
I think our CLA, if we can, let's hold that draft language, and our CLA has recommended that that be brought back in the report, that we not do that on the floor today. Does you want to establish that for the record real quick, and the reasons why, Mr. CLA? And then that'll give us the option to do that at the future date.
I would recommend that we certainly come back with that report to include all the exemptions, including the telemarketers. As I understand the amendment, it would provide the ability for the council to adjust those exemptions and increase taxes for certain taxpayers without going to a vote of the people. I think if you do that, that materially changes the story you're going to be telling. I think the people before you have made a, we have all made a concerted effort to present to you what is not a tax increase.
So that's a further protection in ensuring that there would not be a tax increase on that?
Correct. We will certainly come back to you, and we come back to you in 30 days without question on an analysis of the exemptions. I would recommend you not put in the ordinance the ability to make those increases without going to a vote.
Correct, and I think that is Mr. Zine's intent, and certainly the rest of this council. So, Ms. Gruel, did you want to clarify?
I just want to make, I think what Jerry said was that, and I think we would all agree, if you're going to make any changes to that, you go back to the voters, and what you're going to do is come back to us at some point, which will occur at a later date if we think those exemptions need to in fact be changed, because I think there's been some good questions. But what you had said is the instructions that had been given by the city council was specifically to look at what exists now, reducing it to 9%. We then, simple, easy as it is, and then come back with the potential, because there are several other times in which we can go back to the voters, which we would be required to do, which I think is good, to look at some of those other exemptions and update them appropriately.
Correct, and it gives you the opportunity and us to tell you why some of those were there in the first place, with the impact of changing those, and to make that case to the voters if you want to increase those taxes.
And because your position has been, all of yours, I'd say, collectively in the mayor's office, is that this is, and we're dealing with an emergency situation today. We are not, you know, everything isn't perfect, you know, we could spend probably a couple years looking at, well, we'd want to change this, and we want to do this, but really, we're dealing with the existing emergency we have before us, and why we want to look specifically at what exists today and reducing it to 9%.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was.
Thank you.
And as long as everyone has that understanding that would require going back to the voters, you need not put in the language you recommend.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a stronger fiscal watchdog thing to do, and we thank you, Mr. Zine, for getting that in there, too. Mr. Zine, for the fifth time, did you want to?
Well, hopefully this will be the final time. I wanted this package to be complete, to answer the unanswered questions, giving the voters the decision, yea or nay on this, 9% versus 10%, and then the inclusion of the telemarketers and the others at the vote of the people, and not go back on another election. I wanted to get this done at this election, so we have a full comprehensive package, not to bring it up two, four, six, 10 years down the road. If there's inequities and we modernization, why can't we put it all in the package? We declare an emergency, because obviously the 271 million or 270, whatever the number is, is going to cause major havoc. Why can't we include in the language to the voters now, instead of coming back on another election? That's my concern. I don't want to come back again. I want to have it right now, transparent, this is what we're proposing, equity across the board, telemarketers included, and these other folks that may be not paying their fair share that they should be paying. I'm not talking about increasing it, I'm just talking about making it a level playing field for everyone.
Again, that is, Mr. Zine, that is a decision that you all can make. I'm simply saying today that we do not know why some of those exemptions are in place. We don't know the rationale behind them. We need to look at that, and if we truly want to be equitable, we need to come back to you with an analysis of that.
I understand that.
The question is, do you want to allow yourselves in this ordinance to be able to, in essence, increase certain taxpayers' taxes without going back to a vote? You can make the decision to do that, but I believe that that materially changes the story that we have said so far, and I believe that materially complicates the story to the voters in February, to really reach the all-important issue of trying to preserve this $270 million. There will be opportunities, again, in the fall, or in the spring of '09, that we can make clarifications, we can increase certain or decrease certain segments of the taxpayers, and we can tell the story then and be clear with the voters on what's happening.
And what about the audit process? Is that part of this ordinance? There'll be an audit process on this? That wasn't mentioned either. I mean, we have, like leaves falling from a tree, with these different issues that are part of this package.
Well, there is an audit process in the ordinance, and of course, this would be part of the city's annual audit. It would, it would happen.
So the question that Mr. Weiss illustrated, the question I illustrated, when can that come back, and when can that go forward to the people of Los Angeles, so we could have a comprehensive package?
My recommendation is that can come forward to you, we can certainly report back on status in 30 days. My recommendation would be to put something before the voters in spring of '09 as a general regular tax adjustment that would then require a majority vote of the people, and that would give this council the opportunity to really determine which of these categories need to be adjusted, and to understand the rationale behind why they've been this way for many years.
So what we'll say now is this is an emergency under the $271 million. We ask the voters to support that with the 50%, to have this 10 to 9%, and the exemptions would be discussed at a later date, but it would be up to the voters to make that decision, whether they want to support this or not.
That's correct.
Mr. Carden, okay, Mr. LeBonde.
Today, Dennis, on inequity in our homes right now, how long have you lived in the home you live in?
12 years.
12 years, so your tax is different than the one who came to your block 11 years ago, or 10, or 9, or 1, or 2 years ago. There's an inequity in whatever we have, but we have a system, and as Board of Directors of Los Angeles, which the council is, we have to listen to our professionals here who say there may be a giant gap here, there's an emergency coming, there's an emergency coming, there's something that's going to change the way we're able to serve the people of Los Angeles. So I think it's fair to take what the professionals have told us about this here, and yes, there are inequities in a lot of different taxations, in codes, in sections, in Section 330, but you have to understand that to move forward. So I say, fellow members of the city council of Los Angeles, it is time that we move forward and vote yes. There is a potential for a state of emergency will drastically change the way the quality of life is in Los Angeles. I ask for an aye vote.
I was fully convinced until you made those comments.
Thank you. By the way, just a point of information, you mentioned something about the leaves falling, Mr. Zine? You know why the leaves are falling? It's fall.
Thank you very much. We will now take up the vote, there's no other members wishing to be heard, and we're going to split the vote, Mr. Clerk. So colleagues, we are going to split the vote into the, we have two components of this. We have the declaration of the emergency, we then have the ballot initiative that is before us. So can we open the roll on the emergency? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And our second one is on this, placing this on the ballot, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And if there's no objection, we will send those forth with. Thank you all very much for a very fruitful and interesting discussion. Next item, please.
Item 27, call special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn.
Colleagues. Colleagues, well, I'm certainly glad this item was after the previous item, because I think what we do on this item is a direct consequence of what we just did. And we voted unanimously to put before the voters in February of '08, the telephone users' tax, the communication users' tax, because we believe that it's an emergency, we believe that it's an imperative, and we believe that we need to, as soon as possible, hopefully the voters will agree with us, to guarantee that we don't have a $270 million gap in our budget. Having said that, the item 27 that's before us is, was, the item that would have also put before the voters in February, our gang prevention tax. And I feel very strongly, and I'm not changed how I feel, I feel very, very strongly, and I think the voters agree with us, that gang violence is still one of the number one issues in Los Angeles that is impacting our quality of life. I think for the first time, people have said traffic and gang violence together are the two most critical issues in Los Angeles. And I also believe very strongly that we can't arrest our way out of this problem, and that I also think people agree that we need to fund the missing piece of our war on gangs, and that's the piece of prevention, intervention, after-school programs, job training programs. I think that that is the only way, coupled with adding more police officers, that we can reduce gang violence in Los Angeles and grow up a generation of kids who won't choose to join a gang. And that's why I was very pleased to join with Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Gruel, and we became the Mothers Against Gang Violence. And we have been working towards putting this on the ballot in February for a while now, and we've gotten great support from people who think we're doing the right thing. This $30 million that we could have raised through this, I think would have put Los Angeles in a great position to achieve matching funds from the state and from the federal government. We know that the governor just signed five anti-gang bills yesterday that would have put us, again, in a great position to access those funds. But, and I also believe the longer we wait, the more the city will suffer. I did believe that February was the right time to do this. I think gang violence is a huge problem, I think we're losing more kids to being recruited by gang members, and I think people are talking about it more now than they ever had. I really think we had a good opportunity to have crime beginning to come down with our great police work, it would have been a great opportunity to capture the front end in prevention. But today, because of what we just did, I'm going to pull this motion, I am going to ask that it go back to rules, let's tweak the language a little bit, and look to put this hopefully on the November '08 ballot. And I'm doing that because I really believe our communications user measure is a priority for us. I think that needs to be before the voters by itself in February. I think to move forward with our gang prevention measure at the same time hurts both of them. And there would be nothing I want to do that would in any way hurt the city's chances of capturing this $270 million. And this $270 million also includes money, it includes the $38 million that we're currently spending on gang prevention and intervention. So we would actually lose the money that we are spending now on gang prevention. So in the interest of the economic health of our city, I believe that we should all get behind this communications user measure, I think we should campaign for it. I think we should make sure our voters know how critical it is to the quality of life, to the services that we provide to pass this measure. But I will tell you, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, in a way, because I think delaying the gang prevention measure hurts us. It hurts us. There are kids every day being recruited by gang members. There'll be more Sheryl Greens in Harvard Gateway who, you know, won't live past 13 years, because they're going to be caught up in gang violence, and they're going to be caught up in, as an innocent bystander, an innocent bystander. I also think we're going to lose ground on some of the gang prevention programs that we do know work. I was hoping to really fund the programs that work. But I will say that I think by delaying it till November of '08, certainly, we will have, listen to what the controller said, her audits will be done in January, Tony Cardenas' good work on our ad hoc committee on gangs will be completed, we'll have a better blueprint and a roadmap to make sure that we spend this money wisely. So maybe we will have silenced a few of those who have been critical of us rushing to put this on the ballot. So I'm doing it for, I'm doing it for the right reasons, I'm doing it for the health of our city, but just know that it pains me a bit, because I really hate to lose a year in our effort to really reach out to our young people to keep them from joining gangs in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn, and we have two other speakers on this, Mr. Smith and then Ms. Gruel. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise not to speak really on this issue, but to commend Janice Hahn for her leadership and her extraordinary statesmanship on this. She didn't pour just her time and energy, and she poured her heart into it, and believed this was the best thing for the city of LA. And many of us talked over this council about that. Mr. Cardenas, I had a proposal in to bond our street structure and infrastructure, we were willing to push that aside for a time to let Janice's go forward, because we all agreed that this was the most critical issue facing the city of LA. This now comes along with this telephone tax, and for her to stand up and say, I am willing to step aside, to put it off, is a tremendous statement of leadership, and I commend you, and I know it almost brought you to tears when we talked about this, because it does drug on your heart. And so I just want to commend you for your statesmanship and your leadership in this council, to understand the importance of what you're doing. council, to understand the importance of what you're doing had to be put aside. And with that, Mr. Cardenas, and my emotion on, on dealing with infrastructure, even got put off now another year behind, these are the issues that we face every day around here, but you stood up and did the right thing, and I just, God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gruehl.
Well, I too want to kind of go in the same vein of Mr. Smith, because, Janice, this has been more than just your job. It's, it's personal. It's, because you have been there with those individuals who have lost a loved one, and you have worked night and day, I know that for a fact, on this issue, and to move it forward, and that it was a tough, tough thing for you to have to do. And although it's the Mothers Against Gang, you know, you really, you get a lot of credit for this. We were tagging along because you really were the leadership. She was, yeah, she was the lead mother in that way. I won't say she's the oldest of the group, none of that. But, no, in all seriousness, I mean, there is nothing more dire in our city than the issue of gang violence and the importance of dealing with that issue on prevention, making sure we are funding the right programs. The committee that has been established specifically to deal with this issue has demonstrated how important it is. And we cannot let the fact that we're not going in February stop us from focusing, and I know you won't stop that, as Mr. Cardenas won't either, stop bringing this at the front, at the front of the pages of the different newspapers and TV to say it's very, very important that we address the issue of gang violence on, on prevention as well as the enforcement aspect of it. And so I just, I just want to stand up and say thank you, Ms. Hahn, for your leadership, your graciousness, and, you know, just being someone who is passionate about your job and those kids.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Ms. Perry, Mr. Cardenas, and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to rise and commend Janice. I don't think there's anything more important than we deal with on prevention. She represents a district much like mine where people are financially unable to do a lot of things, such as take advantage of health clubs or go to different kinds of activities. They rely on the city services, they rely on the after-school programs that the government puts forth. And having lost a relative or two to gang violence, you get a real sense that if we don't get involved in the prevention, intervention, and education portion of this whole equation, we have finally come as a city to the conclusion, we can't arrest ourselves out of it, we can't build enough prisons, a variety of things have come before us. And to see the young people that live in these environments, and one of the schools that I constantly reference is Crenshaw High, 60% of the kids there are in foster care. And yet, we look at the end result and we say, "Why aren't we doing better academically?" Many of those kids have challenges four grader than those books that they're reading just to get to and from school. And if we have the ability, and hopefully that we not lose sight, we keep a tight string on it, get it tweaked, get it ready for the appropriate election, and then put our energies behind passing it, I think it will serve the community and the region well, and it will be appropriate legacy for somebody that certainly is very sensitive to it. When the young lady was here from 250 Second Street, and knowing that you had just met her and to see the emotion that you had as you talked about how she, as a mother losing a child, going through a community organizing it so that no one else would feel that sense of loss, is an important element of this, and I just appreciate you understanding and looking at the larger issue of the 270, how we, as a city, have to move forward on that. And then certainly, we don't want to say we ignore it, but we certainly will bring it back as quickly as possible.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank you, Jan, for your posture in this. We need to give this the best chance possible to make it happen. You know, this past year, we've seen a 21-year-old baby die because of violence. We've seen a three-year-old die in her kitchen with a stray bullet from gang violence, and the list goes on. So as we study our fiscal responsibilities and what we need to do, I hope that we are in a position to continue informing folks that we are doing our part as leaders to create the environments so we can have more resources. But I also know as a council and working with the mayor, we need to continue drilling down into our departments and see how we change their culture and how we create jobs for our own youth. Because as Gregory Boyle, Father Gregory Boyle says, "Nothing stops a bullet better than a job." So we need to work at all levels, but this is a significant one, and I thank you for your leadership in being able to raise this to a citywide concern and actually act as one city, because now we all together can push hard for that vote and establish a level of consciousness in terms of how we can change our environment, the hard work of Councilman Cardenas and the committee and the rest of the committee members. So again, thank you for that.
Ms. Perry.
Thanks very much, Mr. President, and Janice. What can I say? Your class act. And oftentimes, we are asked to make choices that don't directly benefit our constituents. And I think that for people in other parts of the city who don't have to live with the conditions that the constituents of our districts live with, may not understand the urgency and the threat to the lives of some of these kids each and every day. I hope that we don't, as a body, lose our energy for this, and that as we enter into the budget discussions, I hope that we can reach beyond our own agendas and collectively look at what we can do in an aggressive and forthright manner to make immediate changes in the way some departments are run so that we can actually not only intervene, but prevent and stop more people from getting hurt or getting killed. And I know that you will agree with me that that's something that we need to do. So thank you, and we'll get it there, one way or the other.
Mr. Cardenas.
I just wanted to thank Janice for taking a deep breath and her willingness to do this right, instead of doing it from the side of passion, but she's doing this, in my opinion, from that side and also the side of responsibility and being methodical and making sure when we do this that we do it right. We've discussed this, Janice, before. This is something a long time coming, but as you said earlier, it is going to give us an opportunity to hear other weighing in on the matter, and we're going to be able to go to the voters eventually with about as prepared and methodical effort to them so that they can see clearly that we need to do this and that it's good for them, it's good for the entire community of Los Angeles. So I just wanted to say thank you very much, Janice. You and I have spent countless hours on this issue, and we're going to spend many, many, many more. So thank you very much for, for doing what you did today.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick footnotes. Timing is everything, as we well know, and obviously, we have an emergency. We need the money for the budget. You know, I also worry about our $1.5 billion bond measure for our streets, where we want to touch every street. We want to put that on in November of '08, but the timing now suggests it probably has to be in '09. But what we have to understand as a community, and the media needs to play a role in this, is help educate the public as to what this stuff is all about. Because every time we say, "No taxes, no taxes, Howard, Jarvis," and all this other stuff, we all run for cover, and I've had enough of that. We have to be honest and straightforward. Obviously, we need the $270 million just for base business. Obviously, when I think of Augustine Contreras, a 17-year-old kid, Venice High, gunned down in the parking lot, we need to do something. If LAUSD had its act together, they would have after-school programs right now. We wouldn't have to waste this taxpayer money, but look at how they run their, their outfit, poorly, I think. So I support Ms. Hahn with her graciousness, as usual gracious, and timing is everything, but I look forward to voting for it once it goes on the ballot. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl, and I join the chorus with all my colleagues, Ms. Hahn, and thank you again. We are behind you, and we are ready to move at the right time, and in the meantime, we will move forward with ensuring that our financial situation is as strong as it can be with the earlier motion. So with that, we will refer that back to committee. We won't be having public comment because that will be referred back to committee without objection, and we are more than happy to take a public comment there when we address that again. I'd like to recognize Mr. Cardenas this time.
Thank you very much, Council President. I appreciate this opportunity, colleagues, if you'll indulge me, to give this certificate to the wife of Sergeant David Almanza, his widow, Salina Almanzan, who is with me here, and also his father, Gus Ledesma, Gloria Almaraz, and also Martha Prieto, I'm sorry, Pierto, his aunt, is here. I'd like to say a few words about this brave individual that we honor today in our council chambers. I'm proud to present the certificate to the family of the late Army Sergeant David Almazan, a devoted soldier and a selfless leader for his actions above and beyond the call of duty. I welcome Salina Almazan Jimenez, the widow of Sergeant Almazan, who was traveling, she traveled abroad to be here with us today in these chambers. Sergeant David Almazan was a resident of Van Nuys and a 1997 graduate of Van Nuys High School. He joined the United States Army and was awarded Military Occupation of Combat Medic. Prior to his deployment to Iraq, he was deployed to the Afghanistan Theater of Operation. Sergeant Almazan served and was deployed with the 1st Battalion, 36th Infantry Regiment, based in Germany. On August 27, 2006, while on combat patrol in the city of Heat, Iraq, Sergeant Almazan was killed in action. As a leader, Sergeant Almazan earned the respect of his men with a superb leadership, living the Army values, and always acted as a professional who cared about the soldiers that he served with. To some, he was known as Doc; to others, he was known as Al. Sergeant Almazan was noble and giving, as many who have ever known him, when he wore his uniform and in his personal life. Today, we remember him of how well he gave of his life upon the altar of freedom. In his actions, we see the best of America. We are in debt to Sergeant Almazan, and it's a debt to our nation that can never really fully be repaid, but today, we recognize him and his family as best we can. We bestow upon this good and gallant man a certificate from the city of Los Angeles. God bless you. Thank you. Thank you very much, members.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, and we certainly share your sentiments and appreciate the family being here, and all of our deepest condolences. With that, we have next item, which is, I believe, a closed-session item. Is that correct? So according to, yes, Mr. Reyes, before we go into closed session?
Yes, please. I wanted to announce that Plumb will start at 2:30 or as soon as the council is over.
Okay. Plumb Committee will begin at 2:30 or when the council ends. With that, we're going to go into closed session for item number 30, according to California state law, and we will come back in open session after, if we can clear the council chambers. Thank you.[1414.53] We're back in open session. Welcome back. We have taken a vote on a legal matter. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to detail the -- or Mr. City Clerk, if you'd like to detail the settlement.
On the closed session item, there is a recommendation for payment of judgment in the amount of $284,383 plus interest in the case of Joanne Marie Anthony versus George McNeil.
All right.
And in addition, the council authorized City Attorney's Office to appeal the payment of expert witness fees.
Thank you very much. With that, let's please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There is excuses on the desk. Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused Friday, October 19th, for city business. That meets council policy.
He is excused.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Friday, October 19th, for city business. The motion is required.
I'll move that. Ms. Gruehl seconds. Without objection, Mr. Weiss is excused.
That clears the desk.
Announcements, colleagues? Okay, I believe -- announcement?
Yes, I'd just like to announce -- yes, I have an announcement.
How many?
I have 12. In behalf of the MTA, they just want to make the public aware of the Crenshaw Prairie Transit Corridor meeting that's going to be held Wednesday, the 17th, at Nate Holden Performing Arts Center, and on Saturday, August 20 -- I'm sorry, October 20th, at the Audubon Middle School. The Audubon meeting will be 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and the Nate Holden meeting will be 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And it's for the scoping issues that deal with the new study regarding the Crenshaw Prairie Transit. And I'd just like to invite all of members that we're going to honor Nancy Wilson Friday from the 8th District, and we're going to have a little reception for 9:15 behind the chambers. So everyone that's available, I appreciate if you come by and say hello to her.
Thank you. Any other announcements, colleagues? We have lost quorum, but if folks would like to read any adjourned motions, we can formally submit them next meeting, and we can hear about the individuals right now, as folks would like. So with that, I'd like to ask everybody to please rise.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Martha Soto, who was very active in Local 347. She passed away on September 24th at the very young age of 42. But what was said about her was that even when she was ill, she was always looking out for others, and her biggest concern was how her death would affect those that she cared about. She was fourth of six children, first in her family to attend college. She went on to earn a Ph.D. in education. Martha is survived by her parents and her five siblings, and she will be greatly missed by the union. Okay, all members. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Joseph Witchman, who passed away October 10th at the young age of 32. He was the victim, many of you know about it and heard about it, of a hit-and-run driver in Silmar. He was bending over to pick up a rosary in the street and was hit and killed. The driver fled the scene. He was the brother of Julie Witchman Huerta, who works for the Port of Los Angeles and is married to one of our Port Police officers. So I'm very good friends with Julie. He's survived by his parents, Virginia and Kenneth, and his siblings, Vivian, Julie, Tommy, Edward, and Barbie. The funeral mass was held today. He was the youngest of six siblings. Apparently, his mother, who he lived with, was her -- it was right close to her house, so she was there immediately after it happened. And according to Valley Traffic, I believe they're on top of this investigation, and I think they know who did it. So anyway, great, great loss for that family, and I appreciate us adjourned in his memory.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
Mr. President, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Reverend Carol L. Scott, passed away Tuesday, September 25th. She was well-known in the community. She was part of a church just at the border of the 8th District and also Inglewood. But she used to have these legendary Friday night hip-hop church sessions where she campaigned through the community to bring peace to violent communities. She passed away at Santa Monica UCLA Medical Center. She was only 50 years old. As an associate minister at the Holy Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church, she practiced a very activist role on the street, including working with a number of troubled neighborhoods. After the riot in 1992, she began working with a new city parish, an organization composed of seven Lutheran churches in LA County, offering tutoring and food distribution. And then in recent years, she was an activist in annual mock funerals where she actually would bring the community together and actually bury weapons that were used as far as violence and homicides. The memorial service will be held November 2nd, 7:30 at the Holy Trinity Church located 9,300 South Crenshaw. Also, I'd like to adjourn in memory. Many of you may remember on the Black Business Month, we honored a young man by the name of Muhammad Nasserdeen. And he and the community started a program called Recycling Black Dollars. And he was an individual that really was a force in the community that dealt with small businesses, small minority businesses, showing them the way of understanding what the business needed to do, how they can train themselves, how the community and servicing and also supporting their neighborhood business could make the community flourish. In fact, the last time I saw him alive was -- he was at a mixer at the Broadway Federal, and his mission that night was to convince people that if we pooled our money as a community, that we'd be able to cause the Broadway Federal that's been around for a number of years, one of our few black-owned banks, become the first billion-dollar bank, black bank with billion dollars worth of assets. And he was pushing that issue so that people understood that you could do more in the sense of supporting local businesses, finding ways in which you can cause these businesses to then support the community. He had a massive heart attack late last week, and funeral services will be at the next Friday. And so we'll get the details by tomorrow. But he is a young man that'd be sorely missed, and you could not talk about business in the Crenshaw area or in South Los Angeles without his name coming up.
Thank you. We'll make sure when we introduce that tomorrow, we'll have all members on that. Thank you very much. Mr. Smith?
Mr. President, I would ask all members on this. Lester J. Bergman, 89-years-old, was the father of Ron Bergman, our deputy chief of police in the San Fernando Valley until he retired. Lester Bergman passed away on October 15th in Lombard, Illinois. He worked for Illinois Bell for many years and was the mayor of Lombard, the city he lived in, for eight years. He's survived by his two sons, Ron Bergman and Thomas, and a daughter, Janice Chiompi, two grandchildren, Elizabeth and Dominic. And service information is still pending, waiting for LAPD to inform us. But I would ask all members on that, Ron Bergman is a friend, a dear friend of all of ours.
Thank you, and we will be sure to have all those introduced first thing tomorrow for our adjourned motions. We have one more announcement from Mr. Cardenas. I'm sorry, before that, one more from Mr. Smith. My apologies.
Thank you. I have one other one. It's Harry W. Godley. Harry Godley was a very dear friend of mine, a very fine, one of those nice gentlemen, you know, those guys that are always kind and considerate, and just a sweet gentleman. He was -- passed away at 92-years-old in the valley just the other day. He was a longtime resident of the Chatsworth area, president of the Homers Association out in Chatsworth, led the fight against the county courthouse, which was built in Chatsworth across from residences. And I remember Harry saying to the county of LA, "You can't put people in here to run it. Why are you building it?" And the county said, "Just because we have the money and the taxes that we're getting from tickets and cases, so we have to build it because we got the money to build. We don't have the money to put people in, but we'll figure that when we get there." Well, today, the Chatsworth courthouse is two-thirds empty. Most of the courts are empty. There's no judges in them, no staff. They're renting most of the courthouse, some of it to the city of LA. Harry Godley was right. It was a waste of taxpayers' money just because they had the money and didn't know what to do with it. They built the facility, which is now two-thirds empty. Harry is one of those kind of men. He was a master sergeant in the United States Marine Corps in World War II. He went on to be one of the chief lieutenants for Howard Hughes and was with Howard Hughes Corporation when they built the Spruce Goose, now down in Long Beach, and then went on to be one of Mr. Hughes's chief confidants until Howard went kind of crazy, I guess. But he was a very interesting gentleman with a very interesting background and past. He was very much loved in the Chatsworth community. We'll miss him.
Thank you very much, and we'll make sure we get that in. Mr. Alacon, did you have a point of information on the Spruce Goose? No? Okay. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Announcement about the Information Technology and General Services Committee. We had scheduled it for 2:00. Obviously, council went over beyond 2:00. So to give the staff and everybody time to prepare, we will commence that meeting 15 minutes after the adjournment of council. 15 minutes after the adjournment of council. Thank you.
Thank you. We will next be meeting tomorrow, October 17th, 2007, here in the John Farrow Council Chambers. We look forward to seeing all of you there. Have a great day. This meeting is adjourned.